Counsel, if we can have your attention, please. I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting this evening. Thank our journalist partners and our broadcasting partners for reporting on and broadcasting our meeting. Now, we can get the meeting underway. Mr. Clark, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by, I'm going to use Councillor Hoopinen and Councillor Turco, resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2018-0813 and the minutes of the special council meeting of 2018-0820 be approved.
All in favor? Carrie.
Declarations of canary interest?
Seeing none?
Under Agenda Item 4, approve agendas presented. Just to note, counsel, before we approve this, there is an addendum. As you've likely seen, there's some additional proclamation. There is additional information under Item 610, Red Cross Home Care Assistance Program Agreement, as well as a resolution, and additional correspondence under the Second Line Traffic Study item, as well the presentation of the Chief of Police is attached. Seeing that, a motion by Councillors Hoopinen and Nero, resolved that the agenda and addendum for the 2018-0910 City Council Meeting as presented be approved?
All in favor? Carrie.
Under Agenda Item 5, Proclamations and Delegations, under Agenda Item 5.1, Run for the Cure. Cynthia Savarin, Volunteer Run Director, Canadian Cancer Society, CIBC, Run for the Cure is in attendance.
Cynthia, you're welcome to approach the microphone. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. Mayor Provizano, members of City Council, guests. It is a privilege to be here. My name is Cynthia Savarin. I am the Volunteer Run Director for the Canadian Cancer Society, CIBC, Run for the Cure. There are two types of people that participate in the Run for the Cure. Some people knew someone who had breast cancer, and some people support someone with breast cancer. The Run for the Cure has always been special to my girls and I. We have participated for many years. I have been a member on the committee prior to being the Run Director for the last two years. My grandmother had breast cancer and was a survivor. She is an angel now. We have raised over $43,000 in Sault Ste. Marie last year. The run raises, the funds raised from all 56 communities that participate in the Canadian Cancer Society, CIBC, Run for the Cure, go towards research into prevention, diagnostics, treatment, and cure. Breast cancer information and support programs to ensure that no one faces breast cancer alone. This year's campaign is "I Promise to Make Breast Cancer Beatable." Please register or make donations and join together with members of our community on September 20th for the 20th anniversary of the Canadian Cancer Society, CIBC, Run for the Cure, here in Sault Ste. Marie. Survivors, volunteers, walkers, and runners are all needed to make this year another success in Sault Ste. Marie. With all of you, we can promise to make breast cancer beatable. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas breast cancer is one of the leading causes of cancer death in women, and the average Ontario woman has a 1 in 8 chance of developing breast cancer in her lifetime. And whereas in 2018, it is estimated that 30,000 Canadian women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and 5,000 will die from it. And whereas the Ontario Breast Screening Program provides specialized, comprehensive breast screening services to women age 50 and over for the earliest possible detection of breast cancer, thus offering the best chance for successful treatment. And whereas the Canadian Cancer Society, CIBC, Run for the Cure is a family event that promotes healthy lifestyle, celebrates those who have survived breast cancer, honors the memory of loved ones, and raises money to support early detection and diagnosis of cancer in Sault Ste. Marie and the Algoma District. Now therefore, I, Christian Provizano, as Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim and pronounce the month of October 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Sunday, September 30th, 2018, as Canadian Cancer Society, CIBC, Run for the Cure Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.2, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Dana Caruso, Executive Director, Northern Ontario Families of Children with Cancer is in attendance.
Thank you very much. Northern Ontario Families of Children with Cancer is an organization based out of Sudbury that helps families with their immediate financial, emotional, and educational needs, because unfortunately for families in our geographical region, they have to travel for treatment. And you can imagine the amount of finances that go towards this when families aren't able to work and living out of town. It is estimated that 1/3 of a family's after-tax income is lost after diagnosis due to out-of-pocket treatment-related expenses. The Canadian Cancer Action Network estimates that families of children with cancer incur an average of more than $28,000 in costs in the first three months following a child's diagnosis. Obviously, for families here in our Northern Ontario community, this is much worse. Every two minutes, a parent somewhere in the world hears that their child has cancer. And although cancer survival is increasing across the world, there are still gaps that exist. I'm going to read you a few statistics. Childhood cancer is considered rare, although in Canada, 1 in 285 children will be diagnosed with cancer by the time they've reached their 20th birthday, and 1 in 4 will succumb to this disease. There are currently 10,000 children living with cancer in Canada, and around the world, 300,000 children are diagnosed every year. Every two minutes, another child is diagnosed around the world, and every six minutes, it happens again here, right in Canada. About 250 children die from this disease every day, and more children die from childhood cancer than any other disease, more than AIDS, asthma, cystic fibrosis, congenital abnormalities, and diabetes combined. The incidence of childhood cancer has increased 29% in the last 20 years, and in 80% of children, cancer has already spread to other areas before it's diagnosed. The causes of childhood cancer are still largely unknown. So I have to ask you, after hearing all of these statistics, does childhood cancer sound rare to you? Major cancer organizations that claim to fund research provide anywhere from 3% to 5% of their funding to childhood cancer. I have brought some gold awareness ribbons today, and I want to thank all of the councillors who are wearing them and who attended our proclamation, our flag raising, rather, earlier today. As I said in my speech, this is what we're looking for, not to speak directly to the families that are affected and to scare them, but to speak to people like you that can make a difference. So, thank you again. That concludes my speech.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
There are about 4,000 children living with cancer in Ontario, and each year, about 400 new cases are diagnosed. And whereas the causes of cancer in children is largely unknown, and whereas in Canada, childhood cancer remains responsible for more deaths from 1 year through adolescence than any other disease, killing 1 in 5 children affected by this disease. And whereas an estimated 1/3 of a family's after-tax income is spent on treatment-related expenses due to a lack of available treatment options for those of us who live in Northern Ontario. Whereas the city of Sault Ste. Marie recognizes the devastating effects of childhood cancer on the residents of this community, and this month, we pay tribute to the healthcare professionals, researchers, private philanthropies, and parent advocacy organizations who collaborate to provide hope and help to patients and families affected by pediatric cancer while making vital contributions to the ongoing search for a cure. Now therefore, I, Christian Provizano, as Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, and encourage residents to show their support of this cause by increasing awareness, speaking up about childhood cancer, wearing the gold color, and reaffirming our commitment to fighting childhood cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Under Agenda Item 5.3, Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Heather Edwards of the Zonta Club is in attendance.
Welcome to council.
Thank you very much. I'm here to talk to you about a third deadly cancer. Mayor Provizano, city councillors, city staff, and other guests. The Zonta Club of Sault Ste. Marie area thanks you for this opportunity to address everyone about our September campaign to heighten awareness in our community about ovarian cancer. As you may know, we've been spreading the word about this fatal disease in our community for the last five years, and now, we have committed to continuing our awareness campaign for the next five years because we feel there is so much more work to be done. To date, Zonta has adorned Queen Street each September with teal ribbons and signs promoting ovarian cancer awareness month, encouraging people to wear teal with zeal. Zonta has conducted presentations called Knowledge is Power in the community, flown the Ovarian Cancer Canada flag at City Hall, and distributed posters, ribbons, and brochures in a number of venues. Zonta has used the media to spread our message of awareness through Shaw TV, Facebook, and other social media. For the last three years, Zonta has hosted an event in September called Purses, Pies, and Pino. Proceeds from this fundraiser go to both Zonta Service Projects and Ovarian Cancer Canada. To date, we have raised over $15,000 for ovarian cancer research. And every year, Zonta has come to this welcoming council chambers to ask for your support in proclaiming September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in our community. This cancer is the most fatal women's cancer, yet it is often overlooked and underdiagnosed. Symptoms are vague, so most women are diagnosed in late stages, when 70% will not survive five years. Approximately 1 in 4 Canadian women still believe that a Pap test screens for ovarian cancer. It does not. Pap tests screens for cervical cancer. Did you know that 1 in 2 women diagnosed with ovarian cancer will die within five years? It is important for me to note here that my friend Sharon, who is currently fighting this horrible disease, will not be a statistic. Survival rates for this disease have not improved in five decades, and very few treatment options have been introduced since the 1990s. Scientific progress is needed, and there is currently a campaign for more research dollars from the government to be allocated to ovarian cancer research. There's a postcard at each of your desks stating how your voice can be influential. The most common symptoms of ovarian cancer include bloating, pelvic or abdominal pain, difficulty eating, feeling full quickly, or urinary symptoms of urgency and frequency. Ovarian Cancer Canada recommends that you see your family doctor if you have one or more symptoms, and they last longer than three weeks. Take a look at the fact sheet we have available, or search ovariancancer.org for more information. Women need to be proactive, and men need to encourage the women in their lives to act on these symptoms. Everyone who is here this evening can be part of this Zonta campaign by wearing teal, spreading the word about symptoms, and advocating for oneself. Many of us in the club are committed to this issue because of the loss of a loved one, and as time passes, we can put names to those who have died of this cancer. Margaret, Julie, Lori, and Susan. Their memories inspire us, and now we campaign for mothers, our mothers, our sisters, our daughters, and our friends. We are working to say, "I know someone who has survived." For me, that name will be Sharon. Thank you for your support in declaring September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in Sault Ste. Marie.
Thank you and the rest of the Zonta Club for all of the good work you do in our community, for our community.
Thank you, Mayor Provizano.
Whereas Zonta International's mandate is to advance the status of women through service and advocacy, whereas the Zonta Club of Sault Ste. Marie advocates for women's health through local service projects, in particular, the Ovarian Cancer Awareness Campaign, we ask the community to join us in learning about one of the most deadly cancers among women. And whereas Ovarian Cancer Canada strives to increase awareness of this disease, provides women care and support, and provides research funds to change the outcomes for those living with the disease. Now therefore, I, Christian Provizano, as Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to share the information about this often overlooked and underdiagnosed cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.4, Veteran Family Week. Carrie Gray and Tina Thompson, Veteran Family Program Coordinators, North Bay Military Family Resource Center, are in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Gray, Ms. Thompson. Nice to see you again today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Provizano, for allowing us a few moments of council's time this evening. Thank you to members of the public and the Algoma Veterans Association members who are also here this evening. My name's Carrie Gray.
And I'm Tina Thompson. We're Veteran Family Program Coordinators at the Military Family Resource Center. It was a year ago that I stood here in council chambers and shared information about the challenge from transitioning from military to post-service life, and the importance of the Veteran Family Program in the Sault Ste. Marie area. It was also a year ago when the first Veteran Family Week was proclaimed here in Sault Ste. Marie. Our presence in the Sault Ste. Marie area has grown, our program has grown, our partnerships and our staff have grown. Most importantly, our connection and engagement with the veterans and families in the Sault Ste. Marie area has grown. Momentum towards creating a strong support network in the area is building, and the events of this week is an example of that. We still have a lot of work to do, though.
In addition to the events this week, Tina and I look forward to strengthening our partnerships and building new relationships in hopes of growing that support, so that Veteran Family Week next year will be even bigger. If you would like to see the list of events we have planned for this week, please go to www.veterinfamilyprogram.ca. Thank you, Your Worship, for your proclamation, and thank you, council members, for your continued support for veterans, their families, all in the Sault Ste. Marie area. We look forward to celebrating Veteran Family Week.
Thank you. Whereas the transition from military to civilian life, following the release from the Canadian Armed Forces to veteran status, can pose challenges for veterans and their families. And whereas the family is widely recognized as the strength behind the uniform, the family often bears the brunt of navigating, connecting, supporting, and learning about civilian life, often at the expense of their own well-being. And whereas the inclusion of veteran families into the social fabric of our community is fundamentally the right thing to do for our veteran families. And whereas it is vital to continue working together to ensure no veteran family is left to walk the journey to civilian life alone. Now therefore, I, Christian Provizano, as Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby kick off the week of September 10th to the 14th as Veteran Family Week in Sault Ste. Marie, to promote awareness of the important role veteran families have, the value they bring to our communities, and encourage the community to learn about, connect with, and express gratitude for our veteran families in Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Agenda 5.5, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Lisa Guzzo, Infant Loss Mother is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Guzzo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and councillors. On average, the city of Sault Ste. Marie has been welcoming 915 newborn babies every year. Our community is a great place to raise a family, with the pure beauty of the surrounding landscape and the kind and loving people that choose to live here. However, sometimes, the joy of welcoming a new baby into the world turns into great tragedy. We experience between 20 and 30 infant deaths, which include but are not limited to miscarriage, stillbirth, SIDS, or the death of a newborn per year as a community. The pain of losing a child is unimaginable. In hopes of helping fellow families who have gone through such tragedy, a local support group that's facilitated through Sunnybrook Hospital has formed. They offer group support meetings and host awareness and remembrance events throughout the year. This year, a Sunshine and Rainbow Family Picnic is planned for this Sunday, September 16th, at Bellevue Park from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. This is a way to help families celebrate their living children while honoring the babies they lost. The Third Annual Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness and Remembrance Event will be held on Monday, October 15th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Sue Star Parking Lot. This is a day that is globally, is becoming globally recognized as a day to remember babies who have gone too soon. It is the hope that events like these can bring together individuals, families, and organizations to help ease some of the pain, but to also offer a time to remember our babies without judgment. These events are open to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas pregnancy and infant loss is a tragedy that affects 1 in 4 women in Ontario, as well as their partners and their families. And whereas a censorship that surrounds these losses impedes healing for those affected. And whereas awareness and sharing about these losses, especially within one's own community, helps healing to take place. And whereas a day of remembrance honors the lives of the children and supports grieving parents, families, and friends whose lives are forever altered by the heartbreaking, heartbreaking loss of a child. Whereas the 15th Day of October is recognized in parts of Canada and in many other jurisdictions around the world as a day of remembrance and awareness of pregnancy and infant loss. Now therefore, I, Christian Provizano, as Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim and pronounce October 15th, 2018, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day here in Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you, Guzzo. I think we have another proclamation, Mr. Clerk, without a delegation?
That's correct. Legion Week, and you're invited just to read the proclamation.
Okay. So this is for Legion Week. Whereas Ontario Provincial Command of the Royal Canadian Legion represents nine districts, which includes 400 branches, within these branches, we have more than 100,000 members. And whereas we are a nonprofit organization, assuming the responsibility of maintaining the tradition of remembrance of those who paid the supreme sacrifice by defending our great nation in past and present conflicts, so that we, as Canadians, can live in the freedom that we enjoy today. And whereas we continue to support and represent our veterans of past and present with many benefits as a result of the determination of our thousands of dedicated members at all levels of the organization. And whereas Legion branches across the province work together with their affiliated organization, Ladies Auxiliary, to raise funds and support of the many programs within Ontario Command of the Royal Canadian Legion. And whereas with millions of dollars being raised from branches and Ladies Auxiliary projects, the Legion supports numerous programs benefiting our veterans, seniors, and youth within our communities. Now therefore, I, Christian Provizano, as Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim the week of September 6th to 22nd, 2018, as Legion Week within Ontario Command of the Royal Canadian Legion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda 5.6, Huron Central Update. Joe Fertizi, Huron Central Railway Task Force is in attendance. We also have a motion by Councillors Butland and Grandinetti. Whereas Huron Central Railway announced early in 2018 that it would not be able to continue its operation of the rail line beyond the end of 2018 without funding assistance from both the federal and provincial governments. And whereas this investment by senior levels of government into the transportation infrastructure of Northern Ontario is vital to the economic viability of the communities and the industries between Sault Ste. Marie and Sudbury. And whereas loss of this important rail link would result in as many as 40,000 more transports on the two-lane section of Highway 17 between Sault Ste. Marie and Sudbury, causing increased conflict between passenger vehicles and transport trucks, increasing maintenance and repair costs for the roadway, and significantly more pollution into our environment. And whereas Sault Ste. Marie MP Terry Sheehan, Algoma Manitoulin Capus Casing MP Carol Hughes, Sault Ste. Marie MPP Ross Romano, and Algoma Manitoulin MPP Mike Mantha have all provided their strong and unqualified support to Huron Central Railway in its applications for funding from the federal and provincial governments. And whereas Premier Doug Ford, while campaigning in Sault Ste. Marie, recognized the importance of the railway and committed to provide financial support to Huron Central to ensure its continued viability. And whereas a task force was established by resolution of City Council dated May 28th, 2018, to gather all stakeholders who have an interest in the future of Huron Central, and as a result, more than 24 resolutions and letters of support have been secured from small and large communities, First Nations, and industries between Sault Ste. Marie and Sudbury, which will be used as part of the presentations to the senior levels of government. And whereas further meetings are currently being arranged by the task force to secure firm commitments of financial support that will allow for the continuation of this important piece of Northern Ontario transportation infrastructure. Now therefore, be it resolved that council accepts the update report from the task force, and thanks all of those stakeholders who have come forward to provide their strong support to Huron Central Railway and to the work of the task force, and further, that it reconfirms its own strong support for Huron Central's efforts to secure the funding necessary to enable the railway between Sault Ste. Marie and the CPR connection in Sudbury to continue to provide a short-line freight service for regional communities and industries.
Welcome to council, Mr. Fertizi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I must say how good it feels to be back in these chambers and to have been so warmly greeted by so many of the people that I've worked with over the years. At the end of May, this council passed a resolution that established a task force to deal with a very grave problem that would affect not just this community, but many others between Huron and Sudbury, involving the Huron Central Railway and its future. That task force ended up being a committee of three people, with others brought in as required, Councillor Butland, myself, and Alison Horbituck, who is the General Manager of Huron Central here in Sault Ste. Marie. And the reason that task force was created was to gather stakeholder support for the railway, as it asks the federal and provincial governments for investment into upgrades that are required on the rail line between the Sault and Sudbury. This whole affair is not just about helping a short-line railway survive. It's about ensuring that there's adequate transportation infrastructure in northeastern Ontario to ensure that our communities and our industries can survive. The city of Sault Ste. Marie recognized just how important Huron Central was to our region back in 2009, when it took the lead to get funding for the rail line from senior levels of government. This investment was intended to ensure that the rail line could continue to operate without further government help for at least five years. And it's been more than eight years that this money was used to bring the track to a higher class of rail operation. You probably will know that the Huron Central Line is about 176 miles long. In 2009, 82.2 miles of that track was rated for a maximum speed of up to 10 miles per hour. Because of the government investment, today, only 1.4 miles of track suffer this restriction. Much of the track has been restored to a Class II standard, and travel time for freight is now seven and a half hours instead of the 14 hours that it was in 2009. While this classification is not enough for passenger rail, all of the past and planned improvements certainly move it in the right direction for that as a future possibility. Back in 2009, there was no federal, nor was there a provincial program in any ministry to assist short-line railways. However, because of the efforts of HCR stakeholders led by Sault Ste. Marie, funding or investment, as I choose to refer to it, was found by both levels of government, who recognize the importance of maintaining this transportation infrastructure. Government response to our approach was a pretty good example. Government response to our approach was a pretty good example of saying, where there is a will, there is a way. More investment is required in the railway, a good part of it brought on by new government regulations dealing with grade crossings, certainly as a result of the tragedy of Lac Mag Antique. Much of the planned spending is to continue the process of upgrade, new rail, new ties, new ballast, and bridge repairs. Part of the funds is to build a new mechanic shop here in Sioux St. Marie to improve efficiency. As previously noted, the ask of the senior levels of government is not just about the survival of one company, it's about the survival of communities and industries in this part of Northern Ontario that rely on Huron Central. It's about making sure our potential for new business and industry, such as the huge Ring of Fire project, have the best chance of success. Since council's latest resolution, our task force has been meeting weekly. Our task force, before the provincial election, set out to seek out the support from all local candidates and the party leaders. We met personally with each local candidate and were able to get public commitments of support from the top three contenders. With the help of the media during the campaign, we were able to secure from both the PC leader, Doug Ford, and the NDP leader, Andrea Horvath, unequivocal commitments to support the funding applications of HCR, should they be elected. We were pretty certain one of the two would be our new premier, and we had our bases covered. To further solidify these commitments from the politicians, and in accordance with council's resolution, we gathered all of the stakeholders here in Sioux St. Marie and secured from them letters and resolutions of support and narratives as to what the loss of the rail line would mean to them. This occurred on July 25th, here at City Hall, as I said, and stakeholders from and including Sioux St. Marie to Sudbury were invited. We had great attendance, which included communities, big and small, First Nations, and major industries. Mayor Provenzano and most of our council members were there at this meeting. The president and CEO of Huron Central and several of his key staff did attend and did a presentation and answered questions. Again, the purpose of the meeting was to rally stakeholders and to secure as many supporting documents as possible. We're happy to advise that we have over 24 support endorsement pieces, which will form part of our presentations to government, giving them good reason to invest in this infrastructure. It had been hoped that our task force would be able to meet up, or would be able to follow up on the premier's commitment with a meeting at AMo in August with the Honorable Greg Rickford, who's the Minister of Energy, Mines, Northern Development, and Indigenous Affairs. The meeting was to have included our MPP Ross Romano, who is the parliamentary assistant to Minister Rickford. There apparently was a communication gap, probably because the government is pretty new and was just getting itself organized. The meeting was never scheduled, and it probably was just as well because, as councillor Butland indicated, there were 71 meeting requests, and they were allotting between seven and 12 minutes or so for each meeting, and we needed much more time. So we've been working since with Ross's office now to ensure that a meeting is arranged soon, given our tight timelines. We expect this is going to happen over the next few weeks. We're satisfied that Ross and his office have given this file their utmost attention, and that other ministry staff are now involved as well. At the same time as we're working with Ross, HCR officials have been meeting with officials of other provincial ministers, ministries, who might also be involved. While at AMo councillor Butland and Louis Gervais, HCR's president, were able to meet with senior staff from Federal Minister Mark Garnault's office, they were both impressed with how well-informed the minister's staff was and how accommodating and supportive they appeared. It was left that they would see how best HCR's application could be considered within existing federal programs. We will follow up with the minister and local MP Terry Sheehan, who originally set this meeting up for us. Obviously, getting a firm commitment from the province for its funding, conditional on matching federal contribution, will strengthen our position. We will continue to work through our local MP and MPP, who are both on the government's sides of their respective governments, though we must acknowledge that time is quickly running out. HCR clearly indicated that it could not continue to operate beyond the end of the year without firm commitments from the senior levels of government. We're cautiously optimistic about succeeding in our task, however, there's only three and a half months left, and HCR needs to give statutory notice to its employees before then if there is no light at the end of the tunnel. Some have asked the following question: Why should taxpayers' dollars be used to support a private company like HCR? There are many good reasons in response to that. Let's talk about jobs and employment. HCR employs 43 people. An average of 55 people per year provide repairs and services to HCR, representing 25 other companies. HCR provides the best transportation options to several industries in our region, all of which are struggling to find cost savings and other efficiencies. HCR makes those companies more viable and more competitive. Algoa Steel, which employs about 2,500 people, relies on HCR to ship its products. Domtar and Espinola, and Ecom Timber in Nerran Centre, which employ collectively over 700 people, do not have access to any other rail, and likely would not be viable without rail to bring their chemicals in and their raw materials in and to ship, and to ship their finished products out. Imagine what would happen to these communities if their industries had to close. Imagine what would happen to our own community if Algoa Steel were to become non-viable because of things like increased transportation costs, on top of the changing market trends, and on top of the tariffs that they face. Resource-based industries in Northern Ontario are having a difficult time as it is. The loss of this railway would no doubt make things even harder. Let's not forget, these industries and their employees are all taxpayers too, and they collectively pay huge taxes to all levels of government. So we've talked about the employment, let's talk a little bit about increased highway traffic. Loss of this rail line would mean as many as 40,000 more transports being put on our highway per year. This creates at least three concerns for us. These 40,000 transports don't just travel between the Sioux and Sudbury, they travel on Highway 17 to Montreal, and down Highway 69 and 400 to the Toronto area, and on the 401 to Sarnia and Windsor. All of these transports on our highway systems would significantly mean the need for more road repairs and road renewal, probably increasing the amount required to be spent by the province by more than 10, more than $10 million per year over the next 10 years. 40,000 more transports on our highways would also significantly compromise highway safety, with longer, heavier, and more dangerous loads. It would increase the conflict that currently exists with passenger car travelers. I think all of us see in the news every day highway accidents that invariably seem to involve transports. This would only increase that. And the third item that we would need to be concerned about is the environment. 40,000 more transports per year would add significantly more pollution into our environment, based on trains carrying the same number, or same cargo volumes as with transports. In summary, all levels of government are expected to make sure that taxpayers' dollars are spent wisely on things that we need, and which will make life better for us by providing us with employment, security, safety, a better environment, as well as an opportunity and hope. These types of funding by government should be seen as investments, not as handouts. And that is what we should all expect. Funding by the federal and provincial governments to Huron Central should be seen by all taxpayers as wise investments in making sure employment is protected and created, our highways are safer, our environment cleaner, and that our industries and communities are given opportunity and hope about a brighter future for Northern Ontario. Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to give you this update. We ask that you consider passing the resolution, which Malcolm has read, which asks the senior levels of government to positively respond in a timely manner to HCR's requests. I apologize for the length of this presentation, but it was important that these points be made again and again, and that the consequences and urgency of this matter be fully realized. Councillor Butland may have something to add to what I presented, and I'm certainly prepared to entertain any questions, as is Alison.
Thank you, Mr. Fertizi. Councillor Butland, you did indicate to me earlier you wanted to say a few things, so we'll give you a break.
Very, very briefly. First of all, I want to thank you for calling upon Mr. Fertizi to come out of retirement. And as he said, we've been meeting for four months every week, and it's been an interesting exercise. And I'll say he's a consultant, he's a good one, and his charge is the best of all, it's free. So again, we remain pretty optimistic, and you say, Joe touched upon it just a very bit, a small bit, about why would governments come to the table? Well, they're coming to the table in Southern Ontario by the tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions. And just last week, the government of Canada said, "We're supporting a rail link up to Churchill, Manitoba." The only land link to Churchill, Manitoba, and there's a port up there. And they haven't determined what amount it will be, but again, it will be in the tens of millions of dollars for sure. So if everybody else says, "Why should we do well?", we too should share in that infrastructure monies from the government, we shouldn't sit aside. And very, and finally, this involves one, we're always talking about employment. This is 1,000 jobs. Can you imagine the city of Espinola? 500 people work at Domtar. Would Espinola survive? That's like saying, "There is no more Algoa Steel in Sioux St. Marie." It would survive, but it would not be the same place. So between Sioux St. Marie and Sudbury, 14 communities, small, medium, and large, have come together. We've got to come together. The premier came to Sioux St. Marie and said, "I support this 100%." So we're trying to keep him to his commitment. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Butland. I have a list going. I have councillor Christian first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fertizi, thank you for the update. I listened to what you have to say, and it's very familiar because I sit on the CAPT Committee, the Coalition of Algoa Passenger Trains, and we've been, you know, formulating our own strategies, and many of the things you talked about are the things that we talk about. The fact that we need both levels, the other senior levels of government to listen to what we're saying, because this isn't a cost, net cost, to those levels of government, it's an investment. If you look at the numbers, if you invest in rail in Northern Ontario, the governments are going to get back more than if they fail to support the rail and the cost of the fallout for not doing so. So it is a net, a net gain for the both levels of government if they support us. I like the fact that you talked about there's a future possibility that we can continue moving this forward with passenger rail. Rail is important, it's not an antiquated mode of transportation like some people think. New technologies and rail lines are more efficient, they're greener, they save our highways, all the things you talked about. So it's encouraging to hear that you're making some progress, because I know for a fact firsthand that those levels of government have heard this speech before, namely from the committee that I sit on. So kudos to both of you for moving, moving the train down the track. Thank you.
Councillor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Fertizi, and it's good to see you. And I did want to make the point, and councillor Butland did, that you have donated your time to work on this project, and I suspect it's been several hours. I know that councillor Butland's a taskmaster there, that I'm sure he was really on you a lot there. And of course, then Alison, I mean, she's a really tough taskmaster, but thank you very much for your time that you've put on this. And I asked it when we had the meeting with all the stakeholders, and I'm going to ask it again tonight, would you take a moment and comment upon, or perhaps you'd like to, Mr. Mayor, around the impact that this could have on our bid for the Noront Ferrochrome plant? I asked it that day. I think that there's, there's that as well to be considered here. So somebody wants to comment on that?
Sure, I mean, we probably both can. So I think what Mr. Fertizi referred to is one of the fundamental points, is this is, this is an essential piece of economic engaging and enabling infrastructure. It's just a basic piece of economic infrastructure. So we have rail, and if we were to lose this rail, it's not that we couldn't, Noront couldn't move goods in and out, but Noront would have one rail provider to move those goods in and out. This keeps multiple parties in the market, it keeps that competitive tension in the market, and it keeps another line active. So it's attractive, it's more attractive to locate to a community that has multiple providers of any given service, whether that service is, you know, whatever that service is, in this case, it's rail. So to me, it makes the bid, and we certainly did when we pitched our submission, certainly did focus on the, the lines coming in, the lines going out, the multiple parties that you can deal with, that so you weren't beholden to one particular rail company over another. So I think that that's, that goes to the heart of it, and it's one of the reasons why we are focused on this, but certainly not the only reason. Independent of Noront, Noront's just one project that we're working on. We want to work on other projects, we want Northern Ontario to be an attractive region to operate in and invest in. And to do that, you have to have at least the fundamentals, and rail is a fundamental. We are lucky to have water here, we have highways, we have obviously our own, and we have the interstate across the bridge. That all makes us attractive. So we have to do our best to maintain these pieces of infrastructure. I want to just build on one point that Mr. Fertizi's made and councillor Butland has reiterated. We have seen our, our federal government support Bombardier in Quebec with the provincial government in Quebec to a very large number and degree. We have seen our federal government buy a very expensive pipeline to support Western Canada in the oil industry. I take no issue with those decisions. I think the precedence, and what we often see is these big decisions being made and these big numbers being allocated to projects across the country in our own province. We see significant investments in light rail infrastructure in other communities, and what we're saying is we're looking for, frankly, in the context of those investments, we're looking for a very small investment in basic infrastructure in Northern Ontario. And that's where I get caught up on this. We shouldn't have to fight for small investments in basic infrastructure in Northern Ontario, but we do, and we will. So to me, it's, it's much broader than just that submission or proposal, but it's something that we need to be doing, and I think we're doing it well, and I want to commend Mr. Fertizi and councillor Butland for working hard on this initiative, and, you know, I look forward to continuing to support them as they do. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Fertizi?
No, I think you covered it. There's a sort of a symbiotic benefit that comes from the rail and the Ring of Fire. Ring of Fire is helped by there being transportation in and out through the Sioux on Huron Central. And the reverse of that is true as well. Ring of Fire is helped, and Huron Central is helped. So both those arguments are being put to the government, it's not just, so I think that's kind of unique and important.
Where I was going with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you both, is that it isn't just about what we have today, and we are all very concerned about retaining what we have, but I'm acutely aware, and having had a career at the Economic Development Corporation, it's about our opportunities for the future. And, Mr. Mayor, you alluded to it, Mr. Fertizi, you've just expanded on it, it's critically important as we look to the future. We're trying to go through a community restructuring and a plan for the future, and we can't be losing what we already have to hinder us going forward, let alone retaining for our current industries, it's with our future outlook. So I just did want to make that point. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Councillors, anybody else? Councillor Kompaitech.
Thank you, Mayor Provenzano. Just a question to Mr. Fertizi. So we're, you're going to be meeting, are you going to be meeting with MPP Romano in Queen's Park, or are you going to be meeting him here in the Sioux?
Actually, we're hoping to meet with him and the minister, Rickford, in Toronto. It's important that we meet with the minister and Ross, who is the parliamentary assistant to the minister, but I think we're hoping that it's an eyeball-to-eyeball with the minister, so that we can...
so that we can make the same types of comments and reiterate whatever comments Ross has been making to him.
And everyone knows how critical rail is to northern Ontario. I guess my question is, is how long after that meeting are you going to report to council the results of what happened, and if there was any financial opportunities for us?
I'll rely on the advice that comes from Councilor Butland as to how often and when we should be coming to council. As you well know, I'm free most Monday nights.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have the vote to take now, so all in favor? Carried unanimously, assuming Councilor Butland votes for it. There we go, carried unanimously.
Under Agenda Item 5.7, Update on Policing in the Community. Chief Hugh Stevenson, Sault Ste. Marie Police Services is in attendance.
Welcome to council, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, staff, thanks for having me here. I put together a small slide so you can sort of follow along, I'm going to be brief. First of all, thanks again for the opportunity to lead an absolutely wonderful police service. We have a very strong, dedicated group of men and women, police sworn civilian, that have a huge compassion for this community, and it's an honor to be leading them. What I wanted to talk about today is the High Enforcement Action Team project that we put in place. I was in place for about approximately two weeks when I realized, both through some of your input from around this table, from community input, from my own officers, that we needed to change our focus in the downtown core, that we had to get back to a more proactive, intelligence-led, traditionalist approach. We did that. Within two weeks, we had 15 officers, I'll get into it, that were more or less doing double duties, their own job, as well as a three-to-three shift in the downtown core. This involved uniform patrol, it involved what we would call old clothes assignments, it involved good old developing informants, it involved finding out who's selling drugs in our community, it involved seizing those drugs, contraband guns, it involved dealing with the prostitution issues, unfortunately, that plague every northern Ontario and central Ontario, and eastern and western, pretty well covered the province there, community. So, to my first slide, just to describe it, our goals were to proactively arrest and charge those persons found to be involved in the use, abuse, and trafficking of psychoactive drugs, that meth, fentanyl, cocaine, through the use of high enforcement and community collaboration. Community collaboration means that people talk to the police, that they tell us, "We are concerned about this community, this household." The city, the fire department, the building inspectors have all been incredibly helpful in this process. The second goal was to integrate our frontline patrol officers with officers from special units. The reason for that is, Sault Ste. Marie has a number of younger officers who haven't been exposed to this type of policing. And my goal was not only to mitigate the issues in this community, but it was also to prepare our organization for a traditionalist understanding of those policing skills. 31 years ago, I was an Ontario Police College candidate. I grew up in a variety of different community policing initiatives. I understand them all, I've actually lectured on them all, but there's something important about going back to where you came from, going back to listening to your community, and doing not necessarily what the statistics say, but also what the community is telling you. So, that was the purpose of this particular approach. So, our patrol officers would take these proactive practices and mentality and take it back to their regular duties. So, this is an intelligence-led, traditionalist approach.
You keep on going, chief, I'll take their names down.
Oh, sorry. So, next slide. So, I apologize, I didn't realize the screens would make it more difficult, or maybe it's my eyesight, but very early on, we saw these results. What's not on your screen is that we took a qualitative analysis of this, it's not always in the numbers. So, to prepare for this meeting, I spoke with some of my drug officers, and they told me last Thursday that their sources had indicated, through credible, reliable informants, that one of the local biker associates chose to leave town because he knew the heat was going to be on him. He knew that he couldn't conduct his business like he had done before. That, to me, folks, is success. My job is to keep this community safe, and there's a variety of ways of doing it, and one of them is letting the bad guys know that the police have changed their attitudes and approach in this community. We are prepared to put people in jail, and I'll speak to that issue in a second. Secondly, there was many of these folks who are in the organized crime spectrum, and that's a broad category, I realize, that chose to change their behaviors in this city as a result of this. The stats, then, what did we find? The ones in red are very important to me. Within five weeks, we had 75 arrests additionally, we had 136 criminal charges before the courts, we completed 38 outstanding warrants, 35, that's my eyes. More importantly, we took fentanyl, crystal meth, heroin, cocaine, almost 2,000 meth tabs off the streets. You saw in my one news conference not long after that, five to seven serious nasty firearms off the street, as well as a variety of weapons. So, that, to me, was a good indicator of what we can do when we put all our resources, all the men and women and civilians of the Sault Ste. Marie Regional, I say Regional, Sault Ste. Marie Police Service, together. Next slide, just want to talk about a couple of the individual highlights. We had one traffic stop which resulted in $3,500 of illicit drugs being seized, that include fentanyl, crack cocaine, crystal meth, and we, two individuals, were identified as being directly involved in this drug subculture investigation, and we're now investigating them for a variety of theft from autos and break-in enters and theft of firearms. Secondly, a search warrant was executed, resulted in $10,000 worth of illicit street drugs, including many of the stuff that I just spoke to, heroin, cocaine, and crack. And finally, we typically have approximately 100 individuals arrested and charged per month, or the month of July, that increased to 154, which can be directly related to the activities of this heat team. So, definitely, from a policing perspective, from a community safety perspective, this project had value. It had value in the fact that we took contraband off the streets, it had value to the effect that we put more people before the court system. And that, as a police officer, is our job. Gather the evidence, take the person, put him in front of a courtroom, and they decide guilt. So, to that end, we're going to extend this project to the end of September, and that's due to the current success we have, as well as community feedback. Initially, it was for eight weeks, we're extending it another four weeks. Some of the challenges we faced, I put down, none of this comes without a cost. There was a demanding shift of three-to-three afternoons on my members and their families, maintaining patrol requirements, that type of thing, and we've mitigated that quite nicely. And again, it's interesting because the police service came together with a common goal, and that goal was to work towards cleaning up the issue in the downtown core and the areas of the city. They were also continuing the regular duties while being assigned to the special project. The third issue that I'll talk about in a minute is the catch-and-release issues, and that is going to be a common phrase you're going to hear from me, and that's basically where we allow accused persons to be released on bail, and then unfortunately, after 3:00 PM when they're released, we're doing the same thing again. What I want to tell you is, you have a very dedicated police service. They understand the issues in this community, they are prepared to work hard to get to that goal, they understand and appreciate the traditionalist approach to what we're doing. My point is not to blame anyone, my suggestion is that this is a macro issue. This is multiple criminal justice partners have to work together to ensure community safety. As you saw from the statistics, if we go to the next, you see that our final stats are still impressive, 112 people arrested, 188 criminal charges, 52 arrest warrants, five guns seized. We are well-staffed, we are well-funded, we know how to apply our resources within the envelope to keep this community safe. My goal, though, is, once we do what we've been asked to do, that it has the value for the community in ensuring that if these people are on release, they're kept in custody on your primary and secondary grounds. I've had great discussions with the MPP, I've had great discussions with our MPP, with our MPP as well as the Crown Attorney, and we're all working together to resolve that. But I think we have to understand as a community, that when you have a bunch of break-in enters on Water Street, and everybody's car all up and down that roadway, or their garages are kicked in, it's because these people should be in custody, they were already on three or four releases. I wasn't going to tell you this, but I'm going anyways.
Okay.
But, the last situation we had two weeks ago was probably one of the most challenging issues for this community. It happened down here to the left in a business, it happened where six of my officers were injured, vehicles were damaged, on one gentleman accused that was on three to four releases. That person should have been in custody, folks. Yes, it does cause me frustration, it causes our membership frustration. Now, people can point the fingers at the chief of police and say, "Well, you're the guy releasing them." I'll get those statistics for you, but I do know one thing, that we are holding people for bail as we're supposed to, and it's a stepped process in bail release. The case is R versus Antic at Supreme Court of Canada, I'm very familiar with the stage release process, I'm very supportive of human rights, but I'm also concerned about our community. And when you, as counselors, get that call to say, "Chief Stevenson, we've had an entire street that's been broken into," I know most of you have called me indirectly or not to deal with this issue, and I'm here to tell you that our service is doing our job. We are well-funded, we are well-staffed, but we can only bring them to the courthouse. And right now, what we're finding is, it's a cycle. We'll bring them in, and I can tell you, they know by 3 o'clock, they're released. 31 years ago, I was taught, primary grounds, are they going to come to court, secondary grounds, are they going to reoffend? I don't know what the hell happened to that, but it's challenging. So, I've made my point, I will not go further. Moving forward, we're going to look towards the positive impact, and that's a community-oriented response enforcement team. We're going to take the knowledge that we've taught these young officers with the senior officers, we're going to put two officers to work on this issue in a proactive fashion in areas of concern in this city. We're going to assist frontline patrol officers, we're going to identify patterns of crime to be proactive, addressing and developing strategies. My last slide is sort of what I've been going on for a bit. We're producing almost twice the number of charges, yet my BNEs continue to rise. And these are the same people that we're arresting that are going out and doing your BNEs. I was very surprised to see that the theft of autos have increased. Sometimes that's a coding issue, but you know as well as I do, you're getting those calls, and I, as your chief of police, have to do something about it, and I will do something about it. I've been in government a long time, I know, you know, the assistant deputy ministers of the ministry, the attorney general, I know some of my OACP colleagues, I brought it up at his own meeting last Friday, and we're all experiencing this issue. So, something has to be done about it, and I give you my pledge that I will, that we will not stop doing our front-end work, is what we're mandated to do. Thank you very much for giving me the time, and I can speak to you from the heart.
And I open the floor to questions if you can... Yeah, chief, we have a bit of a list going here, we appreciate your time, and we'll have some questions here, and then we'll let you go. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you for informing us on this particular program, very informative. And as you said, perfect timing, because I think it's fair to say we're all receiving calls from our constituents. And as you know, our calls are basically saying the same, what you just said, you totally understand that the sense of urgency and the lack of safety that people are feeling, and they are feeling violated, and unfortunately, it's the fear and anger and emotional distress.
Absolutely.
And I also understand that yourself and the Ontario Police Chiefs have declared residential break-ins and enters, one of the top crimes that keeps them up at night. So, my question is this, you listed many, many different initiatives, that's fantastic. The first one is, the constituents that call me would describe the break-in entry, but what frustrates them is they don't receive any updates, any reports, to know if their person has been arrested, or what the police are actually doing about it. And I'm glad to say that you're going to have dedicated officers. Do you see the role of these officers to give more communication to those that have been violated?
Well, absolutely, and I'll be blunt, if we haven't, we certainly will after this meeting. We can easily put those types of protocols in place where we make a phone call to that person and say, "This is where we are with your investigation." If we have absolutely no suspects, that victim needs to be told, "We have no suspects at this time." As soon as we do, certainly that telephone call can be made. I know as a victim, and I've served on many committees in my career, sometimes gets lost in the criminal justice system, and we are always trying to teach ourselves and listen more to say, "How can we be a better service to that victim?" And absolutely, a break-in enter is not just simply a property crime, it's a sense of security crime. And when you've been violated that way, whether it's a person that's coming in to steal $15 off you, or something else, it doesn't matter. So, I respect that, counselor, and I will make sure that our policies are examined and we follow through on that perspective.
Okay. Thank you, and I just have two more questions. Having said that, I'm glad you touched on the courts, and again, the constituents that do call me do realize that your team is working very hard at trying to take the crime off our streets, but they do get frustrated when they know that it's going to the courts, so I'm glad you commented on that.
Yep.
So, it sounds like yourself, along with the other police chiefs, are making that as a priority to work with the court system?
I'm familiar with the fact that one particular chief of police in this province has already wrote the minister last week.
Okay. And my third last question, I know that other communities, as you said, are facing the same type of challenge, it's not just Sault Ste. Marie, it's Guelph, Waterloo, London, to name a few places, Sudbury. And I understand that other communities are using officers on bicycles, and I understand that other communities are using online reporting systems to basically outline where the hot areas are. And I also understand that there's online reporting systems so that people don't have to call 911, but they can directly talk to the officer that is overlooking this crime. You mentioned some great new initiatives, is there anything else that you are going to be implementing on the website? I looked at your website, it's an excellent website, but it seems that there's very, requires more information about what you're doing.
How to report?
Correct, and you're doing such a great job, why not use your website to educate?
You know, certainly the website can be used to, at a greater degree, to indicate patterns in the city in terms of criminality, which we can certainly act on. In terms of reporting, though, I, you know, over the years, I always recall the fact that when we had a theft from the farm that I grew up in, my dad was extremely upset that the officer didn't attend to take the call for service. And the fact that we'll just phone it in might work. And as much as technology assists, I think a lot of people in crisis, it's my own position, need to see an officer to know that things are okay. I can't explain it to you, but it's a sense of security. So, online reporting is fine for bicycles, it's fine for those things that we have in our secondary reporting practices, but when it comes to a break-in enter, I do think you need a member to respond to them and take a look, you have scenes of crime officers that are going to look at that, and look for evidence, et cetera. So, I think we'll keep that personal approach. You know, there are areas, as your chief of police, I can look to find efficiencies in terms of how we report, I'm not saying there is no other options. I'm not saying there is no other options, but for those type of offenses, I'd like to see an officer there, certainly a member of the service.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Councillor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for that presentation and the information you brought to us tonight. I believe you said during your presentation that you changed your approach through Project Heat, and you wanted that message to get out there. Does that in any way make the work of the Neighborhood Resource Centre any less significant?
Actually, no. The Neighborhood Resource Centre, I'm going to give a plug to my predecessor, was an absolutely wise idea. You know what it did? It gave people in the drug subculture and the prostitution industry, and it is an industry, it gave them eight hours of reprieve from the street. I went there, I saw my officers dealing with these folks, I saw all the other agencies there, and we have not pulled back from that one iota. See, people think that we can only police a certain way. We can be proactive in terms of providing support to, providing a hub, basically, of services for these people that have nowhere else to go. But we can also not penalize those folks, we can support them, but go after the people that are giving it to them. If you didn't have the Neighborhood Resource Centre, they'd be on somebody's lawn, they'd be in somebody's...
Railroad track.
They would be in, they'd be at the mall, and they have to be somewhere. And so, you know, I was absolutely impressed with it, and I didn't totally understand it till I went and visited it, and I appreciated. These are people who are down on their life, some can be saved and brought around, sometimes a little compassion from the state will build people and give them that opportunity. As I get older, I'm much more compassionate for that end of it, but I also remember that we have a law enforcement purpose as well. I'm not that old, though.
Just a follow-up, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that, Chief. You mentioned also, one of the issues that you were looking at was prostitution, and obviously, it was tied to the drug trade. Just as recently as tonight, I received a four-page letter from a resident in the, let's call it the hot area of prostitution in the city right now. And this has been going on for a number of years, and I was a proponent of the Neighborhood Resource Centre when we started that project. And I was pretty much putting everything in one basket, hoping that the, and our seed would be somewhat of the answer to the prostitution in that area. Could you speak to that, because it's a complicated issue with prostitution being legal, soliciting not being legal, and how do we control that? And how do we get it out of that area?
Well, you've asked me a hundred-year question, but I'm going to take a stab at it. Prostitution is hand-in-hand with drug addiction and substance abuse. Majority of these folks are not doing it to become multiple millionaires, they're doing it to subsist. They're doing it, unfortunately, no different than breaking into your car, they can gather resources other ways, and they get it through prostitution. And there's always a market. So to deal with the issue, really, it's not just a police issue, to be blunt, to me, it's a community, social, justice issue. And it starts with, you're going to think I'm a little bizarre, but it starts with giving lower-income families the appropriate funds to operate. It talks about giving kids before five and six years old a proper diet. It talks about your school resource programs that I know operates in this city, to make sure they have nutrition. And it talks about child rearing and everything as we move up through it. Once you get hooked into the drug industry, councillor, it becomes a very difficult issue to pull you out. And prostitution is simply one way of funding that, as opposed to doing the break-ins and the theft of models. One $15 hit will last them a day and a half. If they can get 50 bucks, that puts them out for three and a half days to four days. You won't see them. That's hillbilly heroin, right? It's cheap, and it solves their issue. So, the source of it, to me, has a lot to do with our community social justice issues, and it's not just a policing issue, and you all know that, but it's more a community issue, and dealing with the drug trade and the addiction will deal with your prostitution issue. On a second note, you got me going now? On a second note, it's dealing with how the drugs get into this community. As I've said before, drugs are not a mom-and-pop issue. They are organized crime who make money off of it. Unfortunately, you have a constant marker. Some of you are businessmen and women in this room. If you had a constant market, and it's called a human being hooked on substance abuse, they will always go back to it, they can't say no. Imagine as a business, that's a wonderful business to be in, with caveats. It's wrong, it's immoral, and it's illegal. So if we want to tackle this thing, my next objective, and I'll come to council if I have the Mayor's invite, to talk about going to the higher level of what we're doing, and looking at groups in Northern Ontario that are associated to moving product in this area. And that will deal with prostitution, that will deal with your substance abuse issues, and that will deal with your theft of models and break-ins.
Mr. Mayor, one final question, Chief, on the same line. Because I have been called on this a number of times, and this is not new, it's just something we haven't been able to solve. I did look into it, and I found that other municipalities have tried to control prostitution through municipal bylaws, through planning, ways where they were site-specific, or you could, there was an area of the city where it was able to be carried on, and areas where it was not. All of these things were squashed by the courts. They didn't work. So do you, and I just realized, you just said that you certainly would come back to speak at length on this, but just briefly, is there anything that you would think that this council could do to help in curtailing this problem? That would be in council's purview, not police service?
Within your purview, I think your social support mechanisms are critical to this issue. So, I'm not totally familiar, but I would say, you know, Career Council and Employment Social Assistance, Elizabeth Frye, John Howard, all of the agencies, and I mean, we have a plethora of agencies in this community that can take on and tackle this. We may not be resolved, but we can mitigate it. I think that's what you're asking. How do we mitigate the exposure of this to the community? And in my view, it is a social justice issue that we have to deal with, and it starts when they're children. I realize that's a macro, long-term issue, but you know, this stuff will not be solved overnight, it'll be solved over time, and time with the right decisions made by progressive councils like yourselves in how we deal with this.
And I wanted to just add to that, Councillor Nero. One of the things that we should be mindful of, and I think that's a really positive development on the social justice challenges that we have, is that this council, through decisions it's made, and through the Future Two-Su-Murray Project, is funding a half FTE with the Agoma Leadership Table. And the Agoma Leadership Table is funding the other, the agencies at the Agoma Leadership Table are funding the other half of that full-time equivalent. And one of the reasons why we decided to do that as a community is that we are participating in the Agoma Leadership Table as a city, the Police Department's participating in the Agoma Leadership Table, and there's lots of great, all these agencies around the table, but there wasn't a person, a singular person, responsible on a day-to-day basis to carry out the work and do the work and formulate the plans from that table. So, these really well-intentioned leaders were coming together frequently, and having discussions and talking about these challenges that we have to address, but there wasn't a person accountable or responsible for moving forward with that. So, that started, and we're in the process of finding that person, and I think that you'll see a lot of positive developments arising from that, once we have that in place.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. And just in closing, I just wanted to say that I certainly understand that as a community problem, speaking more in terms of when we look at trying to solve this issue, I speak more for those residents who live in the area and have to see it day in and day night, you know, in and out with prostitution outside their doors, and outside their windows, and they are fed up with it, and they make the calls and say, "You have to do something."
So there was one building on John Street that we, the Fire Department assisted me, and the building's inspector, where there was sewage issues, open prostitution on the back steps, and open drug dealing in the backyard. And we chose to shut that facility down, in fact, thank you to the Fire Department for their assistance on that, that was what you call a community response, to a pimp that was sitting in an RV next to the facility that was running it. And that RV is no longer there, and neither is that pimp, and neither is that drug dealing to date. And that was exactly what you're saying, it was a resident across the street who had a million-dollar home watching this every night, with a large pile of garbage in the backyard. So that was taken care of. But how did that get solved? That got solved by a community, a partnership. And I find in this community, you have that nexus between your services, we can deal with that stuff. Someone asked me the other day at a table, "Well, what happens to those people?" Well, CAS, there was no children that I saw in that scenario, but support services for those people can be applied to that.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. The numbers you provided were a bit alarming, but nevertheless encouraging, because we're starting to see greater results, so I appreciate that. When I was listening to your presentation, I put together, I have three questions, but one that came to mind when you were talking, and it's almost a curiosity, you have these break-ins, and we've heard of all of these break-ins, how are these people pawning this stuff?
What?
Pawning the merchandise and whatnot that they get. You know, I assume that they're trying to resell this stuff. Are the local pawn shops involved? How does that work?
You know, the local pawn shops have to follow the law. They are regularly inspected, photo ID and whatnot to where you got this. Some stuff does show up there, most doesn't. What they're looking for, jewelry, money, obviously, is the biggest trade item, and they sell it on the street. And word of mouth says, "Such-and-such has such for sale." I mean, it's an informal kijiji that works quite nicely, and has been going on for quite a number of years. And here's, it's a really good question, because finding the fence for that, well, there isn't, it isn't big enough. If you had a stolen tractor, you know, worth $30,000, then that's a little harder to pawn. But when stuff you can take and put in your pocket and have to trade for money, that happens pretty quickly.
And, I guess there's a perception out in the community, and I'm wondering if you can address the idea of how our level of criminal activity, drug use, et cetera, compares to, say, other northern municipalities? I'm assuming that this is a trend across the province. Can you comment on, you know, Sault Ste. Marie relative to other communities?
Absolutely. So, I've been in this industry 31 years, and my colleagues in the North, I'm very familiar with Sudbury, North Bay, Deputy of North Bay was my colleague in the OPP. We've had several meetings to discuss this informally. I think you've heard me as well when I spoke, I said, "This is not specific to Sault Ste. Marie." And this isn't a marketing ploy, this is reality. All small towns across Ontario suffer from an area that has this type of issue. And so we are not different. Now, I can't give you statistics, sir, on that, but I know, as a Chief of Police, we are no different than my colleagues, in how we deal with it. Some are on a larger and lesser scale, based on the size of the community and the geographical location. But, you know, my colleagues have all maintained that it is very similar across the province.
And I appreciate that comment, because I think, you know, although it's not a good situation, I think it does put it in context.
It does.
That this is a societal issue, we're not unique, nevertheless, the problems are real, and we, and I like the fact that you're, you've talked about collaboration, and I think that that's something that we need to speak about in a lot of different facets in the community. But clearly here, cooperation among forces and agencies, et cetera, will make a difference. I have one final question, and that is that through social media and the media itself, I've seen a groundswell of neighborhood watch activity. And part of me feels really good about that, but I'm fearful of some type of vigilante action, et cetera. Could you comment on your thoughts on neighborhood watch in this, there seems to be a bit of a groundswell, a revitalization of neighborhood watch?
Well, there's a difference between neighborhood watch.
Yes.
Right? And the press asked me the same question. I said, "When you have a criminal occurrence or something to report, call the police."
Right.
Call 911. We will there, we will be there to respond. If we don't, that's an issue that Hugh Stevenson has to be accountable to both that person and to this council.
Right.
And we will be there for that. There is nothing wrong with neighborhood watches having eyes and ears out for the community. The issue is, is that it's a reporting purpose only, it's not out trying to do something about it on your own. And yes, I have dealt with those scenarios, and I think it was relatively public, and I said the same thing. Let the police do our job. There are always spikes in different types of crimes, and right now, we're dealing with that spike of, if the drug abuser doesn't have a fix, he or she needs to go out and get money to have the fix, no different than you need to go eat at one of the wonderful restaurants, by the way, in this town. Right? So it's no different. But, you know, I want to, maybe it's a role for your chief to assure people that we are doing more than we, you know, than what they think we're doing in terms of mitigating this issue. Sometimes it comes down to a pure communication issue. And I take that into account as well, sir.
Yeah, and I appreciate your comments, and especially the last one. I think we could all learn from the idea that communication is the best way to do it.
Yeah.
I appreciate your comments, and I wanted to get that out again, to reassure the public and reiterate the points that you made, I think they're important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Fata?
No, I just want to make one quick comment. If I haven't said it once, during these past several weeks, I've said it a hundred times, that people should be very assured that we've got great leadership right now at police services, and I think that people take that to heart, and, because this topic comes up quite a bit in my travels.
Yes, sir.
I think I, it's fair to say that in my, in my years on council, I've been to many neighborhood areas, and every one of them has a, has a drug house or a crack house. Many of them have those. I brought one to your attention not long ago, it's been an ongoing concern. I mean, the neighbors around there are like, they just slough it off, it just happens, not only in that house, but as I mentioned to you, right on the street. So when we talk about the Neighborhood Resource Centre, and we're, and the success of that, that's fine. But if those people are moving to the suburbs, or they're moving to the various neighborhoods, and I'm talking specifically now about the West End, I can't speak for the East End so much, it's an ongoing problem. So, a question that I have for you, Chief, is this, are you allowed to do a random raid on one of these places that's been, like, it's, they've been going on, literally, for years? Do you, are you, does our system, our legal system, allow you to do a random raid?
Well, no. One would need to have a search warrant that is judicially authorized to go into that home, because those people are protected by their Section 8 unreasonable right to search and seizure by the state. So, if we were to go into that home owned by someone or an occupier, we have to go to a judicial authorization to ask for legal authority to search for evidence that's related to a criminal offense. And that means, what is reasonable grounds? Reasonable grounds means that someone was in that home four hours ago and saw the stolen bicycle, or saw the open drugs on the table. We get a warrant, we do it. We have to follow the law, everyone has constitutional rights. However, there's also opportunities in policing where we listen to the informants on the street. We develop those informants, and we make sure that when we act, we act with success. And what you've seen in this project is exactly that. You search warrant, there's five or six search warrants, one came with $10,000 worth of contraband. That is success. That is success. There's no point in doing things if we don't solve the problem. We have to do it the right way, and we're trained very well to do it that way. And in terms of your other question, that, you know, you have an NRC in one area of the city, and you're finding seepage in other areas of communities that aren't used to that behavior. Those are issues that we have to deal with. If those offenses are being committed in areas that are not common to that, let's be honest with you, if offenses occur in that downtown core and nobody tells us, then we don't necessarily know to respond unless we're out there proactively looking for it, which we are. But when it occurs in your West End, and Joel Citizen sees this in his front door, he says, "What the heck's happening here?" Then that's when we need to get on as your police service and deal with that offense there. But I hate to go back to my numbers. We have been doing that. The problem is, Counselor, they're back out by 3 o'clock. And the question is, where is the downside to being a criminal if you know you can do it and get back out? And what really hit home for me was when my six officers ended up injured, when that individual should have been kept in custody. It's easy to sit back and say, "You see, it wouldn't have happened had different things happened." You'll notice I've never used the word blame. I've never identified one agency. This is a collective that we have to look at and examine together. Blame doesn't solve anything, but if we talk to each other and we figure out, "What's my role? How can we secure this up?" And I point the four fingers at the police service as well. How can we be better participants in keeping that community safe? Those calls start to come to when the core where we didn't notice it so much moves out into suburbia.
Just one last question, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not sure I answered your question, but...
I see, I see a lot of frustration right now with John Tory and Don Toronto, with what's going on there as far as crime, as far as people getting in and out of prison constantly. Do you see, do you see things changing? Because if something changes in Toronto as far as policing, it's going to change for the whole province. Do you see things right now, are we at a point right now where policing is going to go through changes, and perhaps our legal system is going to go through changes? Where this revolving door system maybe will be, will be slowed down, if you will?
Well, as you know, common law changes in time. We see both common law and statutes change over time, and it's based on community need. Toronto's going through an incredible community need in the loss of life due to guns. If you're asking me, "Do I see that coming here?", I do not see that coming here. I don't see the gang-related issues in this community at all, or certainly not, nothing close to that. Even some of the organized crime groups, to be blunt, are not that sophisticated as I've seen in other communities. That doesn't mean, though, that we don't stop doing what we're doing. And my goal is to make sure that those people are investigated appropriately in this community.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel Fattah. Counsel Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I realize we're spending a lot of time on this matter, but I think that everyone around this table, certainly including you, Mr. Mayor, you get the calls in your office, are acutely aware of the seriousness of this issue. And Chief, I just want to thank you and the team that stands behind you. In my 12 years on council, and I'm certainly wrapping up, I've had a lot of different encounters with our police service in supporting me as a city councillor, and I've been deeply appreciative of it. Certainly, Counsel Butler and I know from our graffiti committee, we had Detective DC Addison, Joe Addison, and Michelle Johnson with us on that committee, tremendously helpful, led some initiatives with some great success related to that. I live in a condo association. I'm on the board of our condo association. Police services have come at our request to talk to our 108 homeowners in our two condos to give information. And I encourage the public to reach out to police services and ask your questions and look for help. They're very happy to give you advice and guidelines and tips. I know that we have some tips on our own website around specifically the graffiti mischief crime, but in terms of these break-in entries that we're all experiencing, that we're hearing from our constituents, I'll never forget being clearly told by police services, "Do not leave anything visible in your vehicle or outside your residence." They will take a pair of sunglasses and pawn them for a buck to do exactly what you've been describing in terms of the drug habit and so on. So we have a responsibility as a community to please use our common sense. They won't break into your car unless they can see something to go after. For the most part, they're not going to waste time on that. But everyone who's had a break-in in our area with our condo association, I had one guy just absolutely livid over the fact that they'd broken into his truck for the second time, and he said, "They took my wallet." Then he left sitting on the seat. Oh, my gosh. I mean, the point being, folks, we have a responsibility too, as a citizens, to work with police services. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and I want to ask you about it, is the whole issue of young offenders and particularly restorative justice. This is something we talked about at our committee quite a bit. I'm a real fan of restorative justice. And is there any way that we can, and I'm actually smiling thinking about Mr. Tese for a second, and he might remember this, at a joint Christmas dinner with Sioux Michigan, I asked you, with Spencer Nevel sitting there, the city manager for Sioux Michigan at the time, and you were the CEO here, "How come we can go over the river and see folks in orange jumpsuits cleaning snow off their sidewalks?" And I turned to you and said, "Why can't we do that here?" And there was, I won't tell you the end of that discussion, I'll let Joe tell you that. But the point is, our hands are tied on some things, but restorative justice, I recently saw something where we did that in Sioux St. Marie. Can you talk about that for a moment? Because I think that is a huge deterrent, particularly with young offenders.
Well, the benefit of restorative justice is the fact that you don't get into the labeling theory of criminology, the fact that you give people with limited ability to know what right and wrong is between 12 and 17, a break. And that sometimes that break is all they really needed, so that they don't go down that pathway, and they realize, "Hmm, got my finger slapped in the cookie jar, not doing that again. I'd rather go work for that cookie." And that is the value of it, and I know it's working in our court system here. I don't know if we have orange jumpsuits, probably won't, that's a whole other issue. But I do know we have that alternative strategy for YOs. I don't know what it is exactly, and I can get back to you on that. And I do apologize.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you. I just wanted to bring out that point that...
But we do, they do qualify, you know, given it's a first offense, that it's, you know, a shoplifting issue, then I know they are diverted, because we're not going to apply that label to them and give them that opportunity. In my history, it's been write an essay, apologize to the shop owner, tell your mom and dad how you feel about yourself after you did it. You know what happens, a lot of this stuff that we were raised in, it was so simple back then, it still applies today. Admit that you did wrong, don't do it again, and move forward.
Yeah, thank you for that. I guess the point I just wanted to make there is that I think that, I know what a number of us, Counsel Hollingsworth and I, are hearing from a lot of our constituents, is this personal invasion, sense of invasion. And if somebody's broken the windows of their car, like my own brother on Coler Avenue, he had his, his car windows broken into, and I went down and helped clean up the glass of the back of his car and get a vacuum and so on. I really like the idea of if we can at all have people clean up after themselves when they've done some crimes, and I want to know...
And restore it.
...we can do for anyone, or is it just young offenders?
Yeah.
Counsel Compaugh. This will, we're going to end, we're going to end with you.
Thank you. Just a, just a quick comment and one question, okay? Chief, I want to thank you for everything you and your force do to keep all the people in our municipality safe.
Thank you.
It's so appreciated. You talked about several times on catch and release issues, which is a big concern for everyone, and you also mentioned several times about the six officers that were injured. I guess my question is, is the person accountable for the officers that were injured, is he still in jail? Or she? I don't know who it would be, but are they still in custody?
His bail hearing was today, actually, and I can get back to you on that, and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood.
But, you know, it was put over last week, to be blunt, and because he didn't have a surety or counsel, and it came up today, so. Today's Monday, right?
Okay, Chief, so thank you for your attendance. Thank you for your work and your leadership since you started this position. It's been positive to have you here. And I want to, I want to recognize the rest of the service.
Absolutely.
And I recognize that you're the chief, but there's not a whole lot you can do unless you have their buy-in and their support. And my sense of it is, is they're working hard for you and they're behind you. You've acknowledged that we have some social justice issues that we have to address. I agree. We recognize those, and we're focused on them. And as I, as I've committed to you on this larger catch and release issue, you have my support to...
Thank you very much.
...to lobby the provincial government as, as we need to, to address that. And I appreciate you taking the time to communicate with the community today and let them know that you hear their concerns, and we're working on them, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, I think this brings us to the consent agenda, and we have some, does it bring us to the consent agenda?
It does, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the consent agenda, item 6.5, the garbage truck tender, that is being pulled at the request of staff due to an issue that staff were advised of late Friday. That report will come back to you at the September 24 meeting. In addition, items 610 and 618 have had additional information provided as part of the addendum. And 610, as I noted earlier, has a resolution attached to that additional information. We will then separate those two items from consent.
Okay. So on consent, Counsel, I just ask before we get into the consent agenda, if anybody has any questions of 620, assume, stop, up, close, part of Sunnyside Beach Road, because we do have, we don't have a delegation here to present, but we do have people in the audience that are interested in it, so I thought we would hopefully deal with that, and we can move that matter along, and then our attendees could leave if they so wish. Counsel, does anyone want to speak to that? Counsel Grandinetti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like the staff, staff, thanks, staff, and Melanie, City Solicitor Melanie Borowitz, for their hard work in conveying this property to the adjacent homeowners. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that piece? Okay. I also see that we have a number of, on that piece, Counsel Shoemaker? I see that we have a number of representatives from our fire department here. I imagine they're here on 6.4. Is that correct? Am I correct in that respect, gentlemen? Okay. Any questions or comments on 6.4? You have a question on 6.4, Counsel?
Just a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a comment to say that this tender for the self-contained breathing apparatus, I'm glad to see it, and I'm glad that we're looking at new equipment for the safety of our firefighters.
Great. So, gentlemen, you're welcome to stay, but that will go with consent, so it'll follow with it, but you can certainly stick around and watch if you like. With, with that noted, we have, I'd like to deal with 6.1, are we separating 6.18 out?
Yes.
Okay. So we're just on the normal consent agenda then, Counsel? Counsel Christian?
I just have one item, and it's 6.11, future Sioux St. Marie project update. I have a couple of questions to, through you, to Mr. Verre.
Yes. Yep, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, Mr. Verre, thank you for the, thank you for the report. There's some very interesting information in there, and it's encouraging to see that this project that was started really several years, a couple of years ago, is starting to really take root, so that's really good. I'm looking at, I'm just trying to get my spot here, under the downtown development, I was encouraged to see two things. Internal city processes. Can you just elaborate a little bit on that? Is that essentially to say, are we basically saying here that we're looking at how city operations could better work and coordinate with the initiatives, wishes, and goals of the Downtown Association and the Downtown Core?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, indeed, there is a downtown action team that has been put together with a number of community leaders in the downtown, as well as city staff that participate in those meetings. And the group have identified a number of projects on which we can collaborate and started to prioritize those projects, and we're starting to see those things come to fruition. So I would say there's a lot on the go as it relates to the downtown, and city staff have been working closely with the proponents there.
Thank you.
If I can give you one example, though, Counsel Christian, of what city staff is doing, and maybe if Mr. Verre wasn't modest, he might have mentioned this, is that you look at the three, three new patios downtown. Outspoken, fair to say, wouldn't have happened without the planning department really coming together on that and assisting that patio being developed on the, on the planters in that alleyway there. But more than that, the patio outside of Jake Caroline's, we got a call from the proprietor there, and they wanted to put a patio out, but the boulevard had a really massive swoop in it, and it wasn't even. And we called Larry Girardi, and he went over there, and he looked at it, and within a couple of weeks, Public Works had that boulevard straightened around so the patio can go out. And if you look at the Main Street patio, there was a problem when one of our pay-in display machines was in the way, and they told the city they wanted to put a patio out, but there were some issues we had to address. And within a few weeks, the city staff made sure those issues were addressed, and the pay-in display machine was moved to accommodate that patio. So it's, it's just this facilitating, the businesses doing what they want to do, which was what we can do, which they're doing. And I want to acknowledge them for doing that. So Jake Caroline's wouldn't have been in a position to put out their patio, and Main Street wouldn't have been in a position to put out their patio to the degree that they wanted to, and as effectively as they did, without city staff doing the work that they did. So, you know, sometimes you ask these questions, and they have an opportunity to talk about the good work they're doing, and they, they don't. So I feel a responsibility to just thank them for that, because, you know, I'm watching them do it.
Well, and to that point, and I'll make a comment regarding that, I mean, there's something to be said going, moving into the future about how we communicate good things. There's nothing wrong with communicating the good things that we do. We have a city webpage, and I think we need to start doing that, because we need to start driving the narrative about some of the good things that are happening in this community. We sometimes are bashful, but I, that's a whole other issue for another day. I have another question. The Sioux St. Marie, future Sioux St. Marie website, you say you're upgrading it. Will you be connecting to the Connect Sioux website, so we kind of take advantage of that Sioux Summit network that we've developed? Will they be part of that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, yes. As we redo that future SSM website, we are looking at how we link and integrate the Sioux Network website and the information from the Sioux Summit. And to your earlier point, and to this one, we have a new communications coordinator with the Future SSM Project that's been hired, and definitely their job is to spread the good news and talk about these important community initiatives that are going on.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing wrong with that at all. It's important that people know the truth, right? I just want to make a couple of, two quick comments, and I'll be done. I really like the direction this is going. I'll speak about this Future SSM Project at a later date, but I really encourage, and I've said that, I'm on the Education Subcommittee, and one point I want to make is I encourage all the committees to make sure that we're all coordinated and working together, because although these are all important projects individually, you don't want to have silos. They have to come together. They have to all work towards a common goal. And the other thing is, I'll say this, we have created that network, Sioux Connect, or sorry, the Sioux Summit Group. I, I hope at some point we can integrate some of their expertise into our planning process and into our future plans. Thank you.
Counsel Myers.
It's not on this item.
Okay, no, then Counsel Hollingsworth.
Yep.
Thank you, Your Mayor, on this item. Mr. Verre, just two quick questions. I know that you always seem to keep the website up to date, so will this report be going onto the website?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, that is correct.
Okay. And also, you mentioned about we have a new communication person, and will they start looking into the Positive Sioux Initiative that we talked about?
Right. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, absolutely. They're, they are looking at not only updating the website, but looking at developing the content and the materials, and how we regular, regularly update those on the website through social media. And the goal is certainly to reach the citizens of Sioux St. Marie, but also beyond Sioux St. Marie, and look how, look at how we are spreading the news and the positive things in the community outside Sioux St. Marie as well.
So will this person be using the template that the mayor, you and I, looked at called Positive Sioux? Is there still a role in that template?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth, that, they are looking at that material and other websites and materials to pull together the final strategy and the... final strategy and the vehicle that we'll use to communicate this good news.
Okay. It is good news, and it is very good what the mayor was saying about the patios and also the merchants working closely with the Downtown Association. It's all great collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, Counsel Christian had gotten up, so we have Counsel Myers next on the list. Actually, sorry. I had Counsel Hollingsworth next. I apologize. I did. I have Hollingsworth to Myers. So, we'll have to go back to Counsel Hollingsworth.
On the next item, 6.6, property tax appeals.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. I guess this may go to our CFO, Shelley. My question is, just looking at the list of the different appeals, it seems that is obviously for residents and for businesses that received the appeal.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth. It's for any property that has put in an assessment appeal and that has been resolved.
Okay. From my understanding, reading the report, I believe for this, you're asking for a write-off of about $67,879?
That is the amount that is on the report. That is correct.
Okay. For up to this point, for the year so far, what has our total been that we have allocated for these write-offs?
I don't have the number in front of me for what the current write-offs to date are. I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. If you don't mind. And... Because it seems that when we do these write-offs, we're averaging close to about $50,000.
This is actually one of the higher ones that I've ever seen. In most cases, they're a couple thousand dollars. And a lot of it, we really have no say over it, although council is approving it. A lot of it is changing it from either a property has been raised, so it's gone to vacant land now. It's not like we can say, "No, you can't be charged for vacant land now that the house isn't there." So, this is more of a formality, and we don't really have a lot of say in what we can. Although I can say that my tax group, they do assessment-based management, and they review a lot of our assessments to ensure that everybody is being charged fairly. So, that is how we mitigate some of this.
Okay. Actually, you're just leading to my last and final question. Looking at the criteria, I know that there's a legend at the bottom of the report that we received, such as G, which stands for repairs, renovations, preventions of normal use. And you said in brackets, "Three months." Can this three months be extended, or is the three months just the solid criteria?
That criteria is established through NPAC, and you have to apply through NPAC. So, if somebody has substantial renovations going on with their home, they have to satisfy the criteria that NPAC sets aside, and then they will reduce the assessment for that period of time. We don't really participate in that end of things.
Okay. That's interesting. And one last point. So, it sounds like the criteria is, again, regulated by NPAC, which is out of our control. Is that correct?
That's fair to say. This is all assessment-based appeals, and NPAC assesses that.
Okay. Thank you.
On that same issue, Counsel Bruni, go ahead.
To Michelle, regarding the identification gross or manifest clerical error, what would that be?
I guess the best example would be a transposition of numbers that were entered into the system for the assessment. So, it's just an error that the...
An error from NPAC or an error from our side?
My understanding, it's an error from NPAC, because this all has to do with assessment, not your actual taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on that matter? Counsel Hollingsworth?
Thank you. 6.8 municipal elections 2018, I don't think we're pulling that. I think that's still on the consent.
It is.
Okay. Just a quick question. Would this go to city clerk?
Yes, it would.
First of all, I just want to say excellent update and the different initiatives that we're doing, such as the voting from your home and also the online voters list. I think those are excellent improvements. I just want to clarify for those people that are at home, the difference between voting from home versus if you're living in a senior citizen's residence, retirement home. From my understanding, if you're in a retirement home, you still have specific ways to receive a vote. They probably will not have to go through voting from home where the person comes to your home to visit. Would you just like to please clarify the differences?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hollingsworth. Yes, that's correct. For retirement homes, we do offer voting on-site, so we make special provisions to have voting at those locations. So, the voting from home doesn't target those who are already in retirement facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have Counsel Nero on that same topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. White, on the issue of voting from home, would it be our plans to get that into the media through advertisements? I know that our website, through you and your department, has excellent coverage of questions and information relating to the election, but the fact of the matter is not everyone has a computer that can access that information. Are there plans to get that out in the...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Nero. Yes, there are a number of elements that you'll see ramping up in communications regarding the election. Certainly, the voting from home is one element. You'll see quite a lot of resources being put towards reinforcing the fact that we're going to be on a five-ward system instead of a six-ward system and making sure people understand that there are going to be five wards and the new boundaries with those wards. While we do understand that not everyone has a computer, I can tell you that all demographic areas of the city, a lot of them do have access to the computer or tablets and use them quite well. We've been pleasantly surprised at... Certainly, it's stereotypical that maybe the elderly people don't have either access or don't know how to use them that well. We see that use happen very well. We also are very excited about the fact that you can look up your voter information online. That's something that we've never had before. In between this, you know, news about this tool being kind of released with the agenda being released on Friday, we had a long list waiting for us this morning when we got in of people who have gone online and actually made amendments to their information online. So, we're very pleased with how that's working so far.
That's good. And I agree. There is a segment of the community who just don't have computers, the elderly, and/or cannot, are not versed in going on computers. I have found that through... Obviously, most counselors going through door-to-door campaigning. And when we refer them, or at least I refer them to our website, the answer is, "Well, you know, I can't." "Okay, so, I'll find out for you." But I just wanted to make sure that we're just not leaving it to our website and other things can be done. And I was glad to hear, basically, as, you know, the conversation you and I had earlier this afternoon, that we would get something out there referencing the new ward boundaries and the changes that have happened. I wouldn't say that it's a significant problem, but there are some people who just didn't realize that they're living in a different ward, residing in a different ward after we changed those boundaries. So, I would hope that that information goes out sooner than later, so that everybody knows where they are. Thank you.
Counsel Myers on the same topic.
Yes, and actually, I spoke to the deputy clerk about this, and said I was going to ask this question, because I really wanted to emphasize this. I think this is terrific, that we're piloting this as a new initiative to allow voters who are unable to get to a voting place. And it's not just for a senior. It's something that would prevent them from getting to a voting place. And I think we're still trying to work on what the appropriate wording is for that. But I'm simply saying, anyone who's prevented for a variety of reasons to get out of their home to a voting place, they can vote from home. It's not going to be that they only have to be a senior and show a birth certificate or something. It's going to be, I think, for those who have a limitation of any description, if I recall, correct, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers, yes. It's not age-related. It's anything that prevents a person from attending either one of the advance votes or voting day and who does not wish to appoint a proxy to vote for them.
Yeah. And I think it's important, and I wanted to highlight it tonight, because I think this is really... We're all looking to expand and get a better uptake from the electorate, to get out and participate or to be at home and participate, which this is now going to enable. The question I had was around how they would register, because we're referring the report to them having to register to do this. And it was going to be the week of and so on. So, I think that's still being worked out, if I understand from the deputy clerk, about exactly what days, what wards might be able to do this from home. And I believe, if you could just take a moment, Ms. White, and walk through a little bit of the process, because I think we're going to have people that will be trained, that will go into the home, and that's when ID would be needed to be shown and so on. Could we talk about that part for a moment?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers. Yes, the process will be that people will register with us. They'll be advised at that time. Essentially, they'll be making an appointment time for our staff to show up to their house to conduct the voting process. They'll be advised of what will be required of them, specifically ID requirements to carry out the process. We are doing it as a registration process, in large part to try and make the process as efficient as possible. We will be trying to target different wards on different days, so that we can, rather than having the voting staff bounce around all over the city, that they can do it in a rational manner.
Thank you. Because I think that I was trying to understand how one would register if they can't leave their home. And I believe that's going to be a telephone opportunity, that they could pick up the phone and call and make this appointment.
There'll be telephone opportunity. There'll be online opportunity. There'll be several ways that they can contact us.
I think that's really an exciting move forward, and thank you for doing that.
Anybody else on this topic? Seeing none, Counsel Hollingsworth, do you have anything left?
Just one more, please. Item 6.14, the Leo reconstruction, since it's in Ward 2. I guess I will... Carl's not here, so I guess it's towards Don Elliott. My question is basically, what is built into the agreement for these projects? It's my understanding that in 2018, council approved a budget for $200,000, but it's my understanding that now it's up to $236,475. So, I'll be honest with you. I received a constituent phone call just recently, asking, "What does happen if a project goes over budget? What is built into our agreements? And how can we figure out in the future a better estimate when it comes to council, asking for a certain dollar amount?"
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Hollingsworth, the $200,000 that's referenced in the report is an allowance in the 2018 budget to start engineering on several projects, on probably half a dozen projects, because you need to design now in order to tender the projects. You've approved $200,000 of 2018 money in order to going this year on design for 2019. The remaining... The balance of engineering for Leo and for each one of these other projects will be approved or is subject to council approval when it comes in January. It's just that you need to start the process of design and you need to spend some money. And we estimate that it's approximately $200,000 or so to get the projects going in 2019. To answer the second part of your question, these are projects... Engineering fees are usually negotiated to an upset limit, and that's what you're approving, or eventually, under the budget, you would approve, that upset limit. And if it's exceeded, some of this stuff, it's time-based. However long the contractor's out there, we need people out there. So, some projects go over, some projects go under. And they have to get permission from us to increase the fees, and we have a procurement bylaw that gives us various levels of staff to adjust it or coming back to council for additional fees.
Thank you.
On the same topic? Go ahead. Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Elliott. The question I had around this item was, we've done McGregor, we've done Opton, we've done Simpson, and now we're going to do Leo. Remind me, is Victoria Avenue on the list sometime in the near future?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Myers, I don't remember whether I've included Victoria in the next five-year capital plan.
No, neither do I.
I think we did.
I think so, because that would be the only thing left in that whole slum area that would redo the whole section. So, I couldn't remember if it was there, but I wanted to flag that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is that it, Counsel Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Okay. So, any other counselors on the consent agenda? Counsel Myers?
6.12, real quick one. I don't know whether it'll be Mr. Verre or Mr. Lamming that might answer it, but in the report, I think it was Mr. Borean's report around the 6.12 Celebrate Canada program, the funding app. Again, I don't know, Mr. Verre, it'd be you or Mr. Lamming. I just want to know that the $10,000 that we applied for under that program, is that the maximum that we're allowed to apply for? Does anyone know? If you don't, Rick can get back to me. That's okay. If not, I could get Mr. Borean to get back to me on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers. Yes, I'll have to check with Rick to confirm that.
Yeah, I'm going to assume it's the maximum that we can apply for, but I'm not sure that it is. And so, I just wondered if there was an opportunity to grow that a bit. Thank you.
On that topic, anybody else? Counsel Myers, that was it?
Two that are pulled, I think. Thank you.
Counsel Butland?
Yes, 6.3, event security services. It's $120,000 approximately, security services at the GFL Memorial Gardens and various community centers. Is one of the community centers the transit office or the bus terminal? Pardon me.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butland. No, this just covers the arenas, primarily the GFL Memorial Gardens and the services along the boardwalk.
But some six months ago, someone approached me and said about security service, in particular at the bus terminal, saying each and every week, there is a serious incident that happens, and our security people... Do we have security people there, I guess? But the bus drivers are saying it's a difficult situation that they face very regularly. And they said, certain, for instance, the hospital, the security guards are given some protective gear, gloves, and so on. Are the events that happen at these locations, are there risk-involved events that happen at these places that Sioux-St. Marie operates?
So, if we can go to Mr. Lamming over on this side?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butland. Yes, as Mr. Verre had stated, there is separate security service contract for the terminal specifically that does monitor that on a daily basis, and it takes that role very seriously. And they are qualified through the normal RFP process that met the guidelines to provide that service.
So, we have security at those...
I appreciate that, but they are not provided any protective gear whatsoever. Is that correct?
Just the normal gear that they carry. They don't carry anything above and beyond what you would expect, just with traditional security equipment.
Go at it another angle, I guess. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else, Counsel Butland? Any other counselors on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if we can please have... Did we read the consent motion yet?
No, I'll do that right now. A motion by counselors Hoopanen and Turco, result that all items listed under date 2018 0910, agenda item 6, consent agenda and addendum be approved as recommended, save and accept items 6.5, 6.10, and 6.18.
All in favor? Carried. So, Mr. Clerk, does that bring us to 6.10 or 6.18?
Either one, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we do have Mr. Hillsinger here, so maybe we should deal with 6.18 first.
6.18, second-line traffic study, sidewalk reported. The Director of Engineering has attached for the consideration of council. As well, there's additional correspondence from Mr. Riappel, who's also in attendance. And a motion by Counsel Shoemaker-Nerl.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Clerk, if I may. Counsel Shoemaker has previously declared a conflict on this matter. He wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting when we declared our conflicts. So, we can show his conflict on the record.
And I'll use Counsel Hoopanen instead. So, Counsel Hoopanen and Nero? So, Councilor Hoopinen and Nerl, resolve that the report of the Director of Engineering concerning the sidewalk on the south side of Second Line between Great Northern Road and Old Garden River Road be received, and the recommendation to be proceeded with construction of a six-foot concrete sidewalk on the Boulevard, or in the Boulevard, be approved.
So before we move on to this, I'm going to give Councilor Shoemaker the opportunity to speak. Councilor Shoemaker?
The nature of the conflict, for the purposes of declaring, is that the, one of the advocates of this is a client of my law firm. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shoemaker. Okay, so the council has the motion before us, we have staff report, Mr. Hillsinger asked for an opportunity to speak to that staff report, I did indicate, generally you discussed that, did indicate he wouldn't have the opportunity to speak to it, we asked Mr. Hillsinger not to remake the presentation that he made at the last meeting about the reconsideration, and asked him to focus his comments on whatever he wanted to comment on in relation to the staff report. So maybe the best way to proceed is to give Mr. Hillsinger the opportunity to make those comments, and then any questions the council may have of staff can be answered, and then we will deal with the motion before us. So, Mr. Hillsinger?
Good evening to all. I'm encouraged by the former comments about how the city's working with businesses to improve their lot in the city, and I'll take that as encouraging news. The Water Tower Inn is always been an outdoors-related and community-purposed business, and we want an eight-foot trail, paved trail, to be constructed along our northern perimeter. Let me start by saying, the most single relevant statement in the city engineering report to council is that, on August 23rd, staff met with Mr. Hillsinger at his request, it was a good meeting, but a compromise could not be reached, Mr. Hillsinger confirmed that an asphalt path be constructed. This statement summarizes the reason the city engineering and planning report is serving up irrelevant ideas on concrete platters, while we at the Inn and its supporters are talking about the health benefits of mixed fruit platters for the local community, for the good of Sault Ste. Marie economy, and for the Inn's longstanding cultural and community values. City engineering and planning argue rigidity and long life of concrete. We know, in many cases, this is just not the case, and I take you to page 1 in your report. In the city of Sarnia, a similar waterfront-based community of roughly the same size as Sault Ste. Marie, they resorted to pavement for pedestrian trails, even now, they repair the concrete slabs with pavement to make the surface smooth. And I'd need to refer you to no other than many sidewalks in your own constituents that are broken or uneven, and require repair on a reasonably consistent basis, that's not necessarily a lot of difference than pavement. However, most importantly, I am speaking out against further isolation and inconsideration for a large local community at the doorstep of the Inn. Pages 2 and 3, in the bundle I gave you, there are letters from two prominent local citizens who use wheelchairs to further transport, and I want to, and they attest to the fact that even if a concrete sidewalk has six-foot slabs instead of four-foot slabs, or whatever the number of slabs, distance the slabs are going to be made in, it's not as good as a paved trail. I want to advocate for those individuals residing at the 247-unit Cara community, and other such housing centers in the city, where it's considered lesser-than's when it comes to mobility in our community. We beat them up in summers with broken sidewalks, and in the winters, we make them suffer and hold them housebound, because our little sidewalk plows just build rough icy surfaces. In general, city engineering and planning focus on our traffic counts, our observed busyness on roads, while they ignore new traffic intersection management solutions. Despite words to the contrary, it seems they only care about vehicular traffic systems that are built to encourage truckers to use noisy engine brakes, to encourage noisy pickup Hemi trucks and Harleys to accelerate faster, increasing the decibel level, so the fire engines install three systems per vehicle instead of one-wheeling device. The city builds wider road lanes that increase speed of travel and design vehicle-enhanced intersections to the isolation of the lowly pedestrian. I don't believe we have one pedestrian crossing in this city. For over 25 years, I overlook and observe all that happens from the Great Northern Road to the Garden River, from my office. All day, I can see pedestrians of all kinds using mobility-assist devices, such as scooters, wheelchairs, canes, walkers, bicycles, skateboards, and their own able legs, passing through our property to go north and west. Quite often, they ride the shoulders of the Second Line Road, crossing midway between intersections, and perhaps hang out in the chicken lane, waiting for traffic to clear, because they want to go where they have to go, and they want to do it in the most direct way. Concrete won't stop them, and it won't help them. In their report, this city engineering and planning want to highlight that local improvement notices were provided to fronting properties in 2010, with the intent that it, a sidewalk, would be built at the time of road resurfacing. Do they know anyone saw their notice? That's like a century ago in my life. Is it fair to expect the public to even remember a generic notice sent seven years ago, when on a Monday morning last year, a large contingent of construction vehicles filled the north side of our property to begin road reconstruction and put up barricades totally unannounced? In their report, city engineering and planning further state, the Ministry of Transportation approved resurfacing in the 2017 Connecting Link Program, and the sidewalk was included in that tender. At the request of adjacent property owner, Mr. J. Hillsinger, the construction of the sidewalk was deferred to 2018, pending the recommendations of the active transportation component of the SEMA Great Northern Road Second Line Traffic Study. Therefore, once again, they are very unfair. The report was written in June 2018, it was not released till mid-August. Once again, I had to scramble to prepare for a meeting of city council, and here I am, again, having to respond in short notice to the city engineering and planning report at the same time as operating the Inn during the very busy months of the year in hospitality business in Sault Ste. Marie, where occupancies languish on a yearly basis. It is just not fair to dislodge and disregard any business in this city in this manner. We should understand as partners, we should be understood as partners, not problems, collaborators, not combatants, to renew this highly-challenged city. Many of the arguments with which city engineering and planning use to oppose a paved trail are based on the active transportation plan dated June 2018. In turn, it is based on a cycling master plan written 11 years ago. And these reports appear to be the holy grail for city engineering and planning to base their arguments for a concrete sidewalk, as their report states. We firmly do not believe these bases for citywide arguments are relevant to this local project. However, now, I got to address them in defense. Let's review what main events have happened in the Sioux in the last 11 years. I put a list of things that happened at various large construction projects and developments on page 4, and you'll see there's lots of action there. Where downtown area is sort of chilled out, gone stable, reduced in activity, the uptown area of the Sioux has blossomed. Now look at page 5, where city engineering and planning build their case to scare us into their concrete sidewalk world.
Mr. Hillsinger, listen, I have to, I have to ask you to be a bit more respectful in your comments. Staff isn't trying to scare anybody.
Well, then, let's say that they
Staff makes recommendations
They cause concerns.
Yeah, so staff makes recommendations to city council, and they have responsibility to make those recommendations in their opinions. They're not trying to scare anybody, they're not being combatants, they're doing their jobs as best they can, and I'm really sensitive to those allegations, because I have a lot of respect for the way they do do their jobs, so I'd appreciate if you could be.
I'll withdraw the word and say concern us. So observe the nomograph and see the Second Line listed as the worst place for pedestrians in the Sioux. The Second Line listed as the worst place for pedestrians in the Sioux, even all these institutions and schools with this giant population of workers and students and customers are in proximity. See the speed limit listed at 80 kilometers for Second Line. Sorry, that's dead wrong. It is 60 kilometers. According to their own evidence, under those conditions, you can facilitate pedestrians, mobility-assist device pedestrians were mainly ignored by this study, by building everything from a Boulevard Trail to paved shoulders. That puts Second Line in the same considerations as the plans for relocating pedestrian cyclists north and south of the Second Line. City engineering and planning further argue that entrances along the Second Line are unsafe. However, there are only four on the Water Tower Inn property, which are easily managed by pavement markings and signage, similar to what they did on the Hub Trail at Prost Motors, and you can see that on page 6. And then, they fire a shot at the greatest fears of the city, liability exposure. So if it's all that insane, why don't you please insist that they stop talking and start acting according to the simple solutions I outlined in my report for the Great Northern Road Second Line Intersection? It's really simple, to make the intersection safe, and I had that in a document that's at the end of the package. The business of Water Tower Inn is hospitality. This includes a large local clientele and many travelers. Most people travel through, they don't see the city as a place to visit, or they come for the train, or they use the outdoors. Sault Ste. Marie, no matter what we think, is not a strong destination. We've always acted differently than the way some of our roads appear in the West Second Line and Northern Avenue. A trail along the Second Line adjacent to the dominant property line of the Inn is a natural order of things. From our first years in business in the '70s, we promoted guided hiking, today, we are branded a resort, and inside and outside, we have architectural uniqueness, including our courtyards, galleries, and atriums. Along our borders, we act differently than other owners by maintaining the city-owned easements all these years. At our front door, along the Second Line, my community needs a trail that has character and shape and abundant landscaping that can also serve to suit our business and economic development requirements. It is the same way the city built landscape trails and gardens along the entire waterfront of the city, to the advantage of the community and visitors. For 10 years, we have rented bikes to our guests, so they can get out and explore the city, see the downtown and the waterfront. If the city spends millions and millions for waterfront development to the benefit of downtown businesses, can they not justify some thousands of dollars to help us gussy up the Boulevard Trail in Uptown Sioux? Could it not be a great project of pride and inspiration for others to follow? After all, we are one of the highest hospitality tax properties in the Sioux, and currently spend 300%, $350,000 a year to Mother Sault Ste. Marie. So in summary, city engineering and planning want you to believe that an active transportation report is relevant to the content of their ideas. They want to, they warn you of the scary liability monster, which by virtue of their own responsibilities, they have many solutions. Overall, they are arguing population control in an effort to limit the appeal to pedestrians that are mobility-assist users. Finally, city engineering and planning try to salvage some of their irrelevant arguments by overstating costs for a paved trail compared to a concrete sidewalks. My general cost estimates come from a respected engineering firm backed up by additional research. I have assessed costs for land transfer by getting quotes from qualified professionals at $4,000 to $5,000, which is much less than city engineering and planning's $15,000. In any case, it was our intentions to absorb this cost with the transfer of the property. My engineers' numbers remain at $26,000, not $80,000 for pavement, so I don't know what they're adding to their bitumen mix to pay $2.5 million more for pavement. I observe many healthy trails in this city and elsewhere that do not have concrete borders, and although the details are unknown, an impact of $55,000 is added to the cost seems unrealistic. So city engineering and planning say the capital project is planned at $108,000. I do believe one has to add about $50,000 to this number for relocation of PUC poles not necessary with a trail. By these means, city engineering and planning have inflated my cost estimates to $150,000. For now, double-checking with my advisor, I believe our estimates are about $53,000 and are valid, which would leave lots of money for landscaping and animating the trail into something beautiful, and beholding a naturally gifted city, perhaps a few extras. And that's listed on the page number, whatever it is, is the estimate, I think it's the last, second, third, last page. Finally, I invested my life into this city, I have a passion for this city, I worked endlessly on communities, began new organizations, invested in destination attractions, and did everything I could to contribute to Sault Ste. Marie. I'm a firm believer in a delicious mixed fruit platters that serve a local residential community, that beautify my community, that serve our business needs, so we can build our economic future, one small trail, or one good idea at a time, backed up with civic cheering and encouragement, and a lifestyle contribution for everyone to boot. Let's start now, and build an eight-foot-wide paved trail for everyone to enjoy. And I don't know what further, what the further plan is, I imagine it's accepting the report. the report or not, but I say that if it can't be a trail, we need time to, to, uh, move this into a balanced way of moving, or of, of being able to present information and organizing people who are very interested in this. And I say, build it next year if we have to. Give me time to be able to do my work properly, not on this, not on these very urgent, short-term ways.
Thank you, Mr. Hilsinger. I just want to, I'm going to speak to that last comment and, and this, this was before council a number of times. This was before council a year ago. Mr. Riappell was here a year ago making some representations on this. So this has been discussed by us, this, people that are interested and involved in this project have had a lot of opportunity to discuss it. But from a procedural perspective, if council doesn't approve the staff recommendation, which is to build the six-foot sidewalk, then, uh, nothing else would be built this year. Like they're, they, they haven't designed a trail, they, they would have to do that work. So if the motion fails tonight, Mr. Hilsinger, nothing will happen. There will be, uh, we have the contractor who was contracted to build the sidewalk to begin with, is willing to continue to build it in that original contract. We either take that contractor up on this now, or we don't. And if we don't support the staff recommendation, so council's clear, this issue will die and it will be resurrected next year when staff comes to us with the recommendation on what to build there or not. It could also stay the status quo, to be frank, uh, which is nothing. So right now, we have a contract where someone will build that, that, uh, that sidewalk that's been held for a year, but that doesn't necessarily, we don't have, we don't have the right to ask that to be held in perpetuity. So there, there's a separate issue there.
And if I may dismay say, excuse me, it, um, Mr. Riappell's a very, very good friend, but the issues that he would have been here before are quite different than what I'm proposing now.
Okay. I just don't think it's accurate, Mr. Hilsinger, to say that this is kind of, has been done in any kind of clandestine or rushed way. It's been done over the course of a long period of time and this council's, this will mark the fourth time this council has discussed this trail versus sidewalk. Whatever the dynamics of that are, it will mark the fourth time we've discussed it. So we have a procedural question here. I'm going to go with Councilor Myers.
Just on what you just said, Mr. Mayor, if we do not proceed with anything, where does that put us in jeopardy to the tender that was asked that included the sidewalk? Are we at any risk there?
Well, there's not, I'll let, I'll let staff speak to that.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers. I'll let the city engineer corroborate this, but we would have to come back to council if it is that we wanted to go for it. Right now, that would mean nothing would be built and it would not honor the contract price that was honored by us delaying this. And we would have to go to tender again. So I look to the city engineer and whatever he could add to that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I would say that it's probably not wise to try to ask to carry a project forward for two years. It would probably, whatever is constructed there, we would include in another, in another tender and, and whatever year we build it. Miscellaneous paving of some kind.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Nero, same, that's answered? Okay. So can, if we can then, Mr. Hilsinger's had the opportunity to present, we thank you for that, sir. Now we're going to give questions, you're going to ask whatever questions you have of our staff, our staff will answer those questions and then we'll vote on the matter. So we'll start with Councilor Hoopin in and then we'll go around.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, my question was for Mr. Hilsinger, if I may. On page 85 of the report from Mr. McConnell, staff did suggest two alternatives. Either the sidewalk could be moved onto the donated land that Mr. Hilsinger has offered, thereby increasing the size of the boulevard, or Mr. Hilsinger could build an asphalt path beside the sidewalk. Do any, do either of those appeal to you, Mr. Hilsinger?
I see it's senseless duplication and it's not, still not going to serve the people who use mobility assist devices, of which there are many, as you well know from that They, if you read the letters, they, you know, quite often these people want to walk side by side and with the person they're with. And they can't do that, which is just one small example, but this is where, this is the way the, this group of people need access. And it's not complete mobility unless it's a, in their mind, unless it's a paved surface.
Okay, I just want to also mention that the sidewalk is going to be six feet wide. It's, that's a little bit extra than what is normal. I think it's four. Uh, so six feet wide, in your opinion, would not be able to accommodate two people walking side by side?
But sidewalks have bumps in them and that's what drives people, that's what, that's what is the issue with, with chairs and walkers and scooters and those, those kind of vehicles, of which we see many in our community, we're seeing more and more.
And I believe that staff has also mentioned that the new standard for 2018 Capital Works is that they will be implementing a new formula where the expansion joints are one saw cut. So I'm sorry, I don't understand that, but it looks like they've, they have noted that and they will be working on making it a little bit easier for wheelchair accessible people.
The testimony in those two letters, Judy, says that that's not as good as a paved trail. It's mentioned specifically in one letter.
Councilor Hoopin, if you have questions about the staff report, so I'd ask that you bring your staff.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Councilor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. My questions will be to Mr. Don Elliott. It seems that many groups have clearly said and agreed that the Great Northern Road second line intersection is dangerous. And it seems that the, in the report, in letters that we received, so why are we so focused on trying to get active transportation cycling across this intersection? My couple of questions instead, is there a more safer crossing, or perhaps there is something more safe like Northern Avenue? So since safety is everyone's priority and we're trying to accommodate recreational cyclists and active transportation commuters, Don, I know you and your team have always been looking at the future and driving towards a bigger picture. So what is the bigger picture? Is there a safer way to avoid this busy intersection? Do we really need to cross this intersection? Is there another intersection that we can consider such as the Northern Avenue? I think there was some mention about a loop or ring around this busy area for the safety of our citizens.
Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Hollingsworth, that's precisely the direction that staff is going based on various environmental assessments and the cycling master plan, et cetera, and this most recent active transportation component. Northern Avenue, we're finishing up an environmental assessment to convert it to three lanes with cycling lanes next to the curbs, so it will be converted similar to Queen Street. And that is a good east-west link, south of second line. And this active transportation report is recommending that we consider active transportation link north of second line across Great Northern Road, possibly in the area of the new light that may come in as part of the proposed development. And that is, a ring is the term we use when you have a major traffic issue in one area, you try to provide facilities around that, that area so that people have access in much, in much safer means. It's not unlike the way we want to do Sackville Road. It's, Sackville Road will be a ring, a bit of a, a bit of a ring around the Great Northern Road, uh, your busiest street, basically, and the Trans-Canada Highway. So those, those, those initiatives are underway. Council approved that we start those environmental assessments for the northern part of those connections and we intend to include those in, in the next budget.
Okay, thank you. I have about three other questions. So it seems like hypothetically, if we're all worried about this busy intersection, there might be a benefit to speed up the construction of Northern Avenue and the benefit could be possibly a path to the old Alexandria High School or now known as the Boral French Immersion Public School, which will have a discovery center and library, which means a lot of children and families will be using. So my other question is this, has a traffic survey been done between the intersection of Great Northern Road, second line versus the Northern Avenue and Great Northern Road intersection? Is one intersection busier than others? Is one a little bit more safer to potentially have the path going up that way? And then my other question is, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the current hub trail already touches onto the Wire Tower Inn with regards to, it goes behind the ambulance building slash snowmobile association building. And I think there's, it's a feeder, it's a spoke, as using your words, a spoke that goes into the Wire Tower Inn currently.
Yeah, we're, it's a lot more than a question, Councilor, but like we're, yeah, we're, we see, I feel like we're way off the, the report. I feel like you're, you're way off the report.
My, my, my point is that it goes back to looking at the report you just mentioned earlier in this conversation, Mayor, that we may have the opportunity to just say we won't go with any sidewalk. And so, and I'm just reiterating
That's not what you're really discussing, though. Like you're not, that, that
Well, it's part of the argument because I'm just reiterating that there are future plans, so we may want to just postpone this.
Yeah, there's a, wow. If you vote against the resolution, you are.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
So my point is that there is other projects that are being looked at.
Well, none for, for this piece of property. The other projects that involve a hub trail would have it routed in a different way. So what you'd end up having is the hub trail running a different way if you moved, accelerated those, and then you'd still have this piece of property being barren.
True, but with this additional information, it may influence or make, allow our council members around the table to have a different thought. That's all my point is. Thank you.
Councilor Nero, I've got, I've got your, I've got your
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Elliott, are there, the report talks about liability exposure, page two of the report. Are there any ways to mitigate the liability exposure if we did do the asphalt trail? Or is just going against the consultant's report, um, exposure to liability in itself?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Nero, the, if, from, from the engineering perspective, it's very simple. When a specialist tells you not to do something, we don't tend to go against that recommendation. And I also, I would add, add maybe, the legal department could add something more to the liability question. I don't know that there's anything else we would do to lessen that liability other than signage.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Nero, in terms of liability from, obviously that's our, our area that we caution council on, and here we have an expert report which essentially says that, that does not recommend proceeding with a multipath trail here and specifically states that, specifically focuses on this area between Great Northern Road and Old Garden River Road and states that it's not recommended here and states the reasons because there is high risk. So we do have that in writing. Now, if we do have an accident or an incident in that area, council on, council acting for somebody who is injured would certainly plead that the city constructed a path contrary to specialist's recommendation. That would be a grounds that they would claim in terms of negligence. So that would likely form part of a claim if in fact an incident were to occur.
Okay. Thank you. Let me say before I ask the next question, I've always, I've always heeded the advice of staff, both legal and engineering, when it comes to these kinds of decisions because our staff are the ones that directs us on liability issues and through consultants the best way to prove things. And I think, obviously, I understand completely that if we go against those recommendations, it opens us up for liability issues. But having said that, I, what I can't get my head around, the last couple of meetings that we've talked about this, is how this liability changes from having a, a six-foot concrete sidewalk compared to an eight-foot paved trail. We don't have any way of controlling, once we put that structure there, what people do with it, if they want to ride their bike on it, if they want to go on, access it with their wheelchair, if they want to go to the corner of Great Northern Road and try and cross it. It doesn't matter what the structure is. I'm having a hard time understanding how we have liability, if it's a paved trail, eight foot wide versus a six-foot concrete. And that's what you need to help me with because I understand the comments and, and the presentation that Mr. Hilsinger brings, and there's nothing more that I would like to do to integrate the ideas that he has into this sidewalk or trail. But I need to get past the liability exposure. Mr. Elliott, if you could speak to that, or?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Nero, perhaps Melanie and Don McConnell could add if they feel necessary, but I think the general sense is, when we discuss this, when you have an asphalt path that invites cyclists of all abilities, whereas concrete sidewalks seem to be more for pedestrians and, and of course, wheelchairs, et cetera. So by doing an asphalt path that goes in a certain direction, in our minds, that, that may invite cyclists of all abilities to head in that direction and they'd end up at the busiest intersection in town. Perhaps the other staff could add what they feel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Nero, in terms of bicycle use, there is, under our current bylaw, you are not permitted to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk in the city of Sioux St. Marie. There is provision under there unless you're a certain age, under the age of 10, you must ride on the roadway. So in this case, the consultant recommended that to ride the, if, if the city were to construct actual bicycle paths, that it be separated by way of a divided area and then you would need to require city property or property from owners in that area to actually allow for that to occur. So that's, the city taking the initiative to create some sort of multi-use trail. So whether it be bike lanes or a multi-path, multi-path area. So that's one area of concern. The other area of concern is exactly as Mr. Elliott has said, you're inviting people to the busiest area by the city constructing a multi-use path there now. That's the difference between a sidewalk versus encouraging active modes of transportation to that area and then where do they go from there? So now you have those cyclists invited to that area by the city constructing a pathway there and that's where the liability exposure goes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have a third question from Mr. Elliott. I believe Mr. Hilsinger in his presentation said that it, the, it wouldn't require the movement of utility poles if we did an eight-foot paved trail, but would if we did a six-foot sidewalk? I quite don't understand that.
Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Nero, we'd have to confirm, there may be some utilities that have to be moved depending on the location of the paved trail along the waterfront frontage, but there would, I think certainly be, utilities have to be relocated on the, the shell property towards the intersection.
Okay, but, but if we did, if I'm understanding this correctly, if, if we went ahead with the six-foot sidewalk and we need to move some utility poles, certainly if we went eight feet wide, we would still have to move those utility poles.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Nero, I believe Mr. Hilsinger's point is that he's giving us some property and the eight-foot asphalt path could be fit behind all the utilities.
Okay, that explains it. And thirdly, I think in this discussion, I think it happened the last time we brought this up, is that we shouldn't be mixing the active transportation link study with the building of a sidewalk, if I understand this correctly, because we, we're talking about the
But you're not talking about building a sidewalk anymore. You're talking about building an active transportation. The second thing is an active transportation.
But that's where we get off because once we call it a paved trail, then you're saying it fits into the active transportation.
Sure, it's not a sidewalk, you're inviting active transportation there. So it, it goes to like, you, you can't, you can't, you can't have your cake and eat it too. So like, it is, it is a link to the hub trail. It's an active transportation link to the hub trail. So that's how they have to approach it as city staff.
Okay, and that's why I asked the first question, if there are any ways to mitigate the liability exposure because, you know, could there be signage that says specifically, this is not a trail? I mean, I understand that it's not the hub trail, there's no bicycles allowed, whatever, but I but I get, I did get the answer to that.
If you're gonna put that sign up, what's the purpose of it?
Yeah, I did get the answer to that question, so I just wanted to make sure that.
Council Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question will go to, uh, Mr. Elliott or Mrs. Borowitz. Going back to the liability, on the, uh, staffs did two suggestions or alternatives. They said either the sidewalk could be moved onto the donated land, therefore increasing the size of the boulevard buffer. So, we're looking at more than eight feet. Because it's from the road. Or Mr. Hilsinger can build an asphalt path beside the sidewalk on his property. So, you have your sidewalk, concrete, then Mr. Hilsinger builds, uh, an asphalt path. So, we're looking at more, we're looking at eight feet minimum. So, what about the liability there, then?
If it's his path, we have no liability.
Well, hang on, so, we don't, so, you have two cyclists, one is on the city's path and one's on Mr. Hilsinger's path?
No.
What the city's saying in its report is he can build a path if he wants a path.
Yes.
So, that would be an active transportation route. We would have no responsibility for that. There's no liability with us, that's what the city's saying. They're not like, it's not, the city isn't suggesting they go together. The city's saying we would build our sidewalk, and if Mr. Hilsinger wants an active transportation path, he could have one, and we wouldn't be responsible for that.
Beside the sidewalk on his property. That's beside, that's right beside it. Am I correct?
Well, I think that they proposed that's where he could put it, but it's not, they don't go together. They weren't writing those things to go together.
That's what I'm reading here. But, um, so I guess to Mr. Elliott, regarding the estimated cost that Mr. Hilsinger has provided, he has mentioned it's $53,000, and the cost of a sidewalk will be $129,000. Now, you came back and said it was $108,000 for your estimate and for the concrete, and $150,000 for asphalt. Why the big difference?
Mr. Mayor, to, to Council Bruni, I think you have a private consultant doing an estimate on, uh, the way he would design the trail, and we put an estimate together based on how we would design the trail. We have some experience with asphalt paths with the hub trail, and we know, uh, we would probably, I think the difference between the two estimates is the fact that we would probably put a much deeper base, uh, gravel base underneath it because we know asphalt, because it's a flexible pavement. It moves with the frost, and the deeper you go with gravel, the better the base is, the more longevity you get. And if you put sub drainage in to get rid of the water, you may even give it more longevity. But in the end, uh, that's what makes our price higher. But in the end, we believe the asphalt doesn't last near as long as a concrete surface for a sidewalk. So, you're not really comparing apples to apples. And the, the engineer that, uh, did the estimate for, for Mr. Hilsinger wasn't estimating exactly the same items that we were estimating or the same quantities. If that helps.
Okay.
For repair costs, what's cheaper to repair, asphalt or concrete?
Mr. Mayor, to Council Bruni, it depends. It depends on, uh, a number of things, I suppose. The, uh, concrete, the rigid concrete, the, the stuff that we call concrete's more expensive to put down because, and especially when it's reinforced. But asphalt can be expensive too, depending on a small, a small, small patch. Do you do it with, uh, a hand crew? Do you bring a spreader in? There's any number of things that affects the cost.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Council Myers.
One of the things that I wanted to bring out, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm not sure if I should address this to Mr. Girardi, but I did have a conversation with Mr. Elliott about it earlier today. At this time, when we do our snow removal management on sidewalks, um, we would be including this particular piece if this was a sidewalk. Correct? I, I did speak with Susan Hamilton Beach, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, to our, um, Deputy C A O, so I don't know whether Mr. Girardi wants to comment on that or not. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Please, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Myers, you're talking about snow removal on that portion of sidewalk. If and when it's built, we'll do an evaluation like we do at every other sidewalk, and it's a high-traffic area, so most likely that will be part of the sidewalk grouping that would be cleared to the winter program.
Thank you. And that's what your Director of Public first told me, too. So, it's good, isn't it?
Well, it is a high volume.
It's the policy. But, but quite frankly, I'm quite certain it would be one that would meet our criteria and have snow removal. And my point there is that if it was a trail that was part of our John Roswell hub trail system, it would not have snow removal. Because we don't do snow removal to the same extent on the hub trail. There's some pockets right now that we're doing, but, um, through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Girardi, I don't know if you want to speak anymore to this piece because we did have a conversation about it, but I just want to point out to council, we're talking about access and trying to provide some, some better pedestrian access for folks. We'll have a year-round access with a sidewalk. We will not have a year-round access with a portion of a hub trail. Is there anything more, Mr. Elliott, through you, Mr. Mayor, that you wanted to add to that, or?
Mr. Mayor, to Council Myers, I think, uh, the disadvantage that you get if you did plow the hub trail, a wide asphalt path, you would need to plow probably two passes to plow the whole thing because if you just do one narrow pass, then you're gonna get what we call differential frost action because the snow does insulate the ground below it, and that will cause your pavement to prematurely deteriorate. That's what happens to asphalt.
Yeah, and I guess that, I wanted to point that out after our conversation to council that when we think about the asphalt roadways we deal with in the city and the potholes, think about that, because that's what we'd be dealing with here. Um, a, a concrete sidewalk can sustain snow removal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Butland.
Yeah, I must admit, the technical aspects of all of this have now left me behind, and I'm not enjoying the tone that has been presented, indicating that we're trying to scare people and engineers don't have the appropriate or the right estimates on the cost of this, the cost of that, and, uh, this liability is a specter that we put out there, and it's totally illegitimate. I don't believe that to be true. And we hire consultants, and there is a accusation out there, you people hire consultants all the time and you don't listen to them. I'm not saying this is the one that we should stick by, but this liability issue is very, very real. And the most minor incident that would happen if we had go against staff report, you can bet we will be instantly guilty, and it'll be, not whether you have to pay, it'll be how much you'll have to pay. So, it is very, very real. Mr. Riopel, in one of your, and by the way, I appreciate the passion of both these individuals. I know they're convinced that this is the right way, and in case of Mr. Hilsinger, it is the only way. I don't have a salary.
Mr. Riopel, uh, is there okay to cite his?
Yeah, his, his, his communication's on the public agenda, so you could certainly reference it. We, we put his email on the public agenda so anyone in the public could read it.
A compromise solution until a long-term solution is implemented might be to build the concrete sidewalk as proposed and call it a multi-use trail. And this way cyclists could use the, the riding on the sidewalk, and we would not charge them legally. So, are you totally on side with Mr. Hilsinger, or your compromise is not on his side?
I don't know that we want to draw Mr. Riopel into this. He had the right communication.
Well, I'm sure he wants to be involved.
But he, he's not asked to make submissions, and I don't want to turn this into, you know, a, a kind of a, a public debate.
I, I do appreciate that ruling. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, look, council, we have to make a decision here, okay? So, we have a motion, and that motion is to build this six-foot sidewalk. I want to touch in a couple of points, and then we're gonna, we're gonna vote. This has been before us a number of times. When this plan originally came before us to do, redo this road, uh, it was an improvement that we were putting in a pedestrian pathway between Great Northern Road and Old Garden River Road. I agree with everybody who says, just look at where the foot traffic is, look at where the bike traffic is, look at the beaten paths, and that's where people go. And I think in this case, it's very clear people go there. So, I was happy to see staff decide to put some infrastructure in there to accommodate those people. Uh, we had at that point some, some objection from the general public, saying they wanted a, a, a trail. They came, they made attendances, we took this issue, we got some advice on it, we came back, and we determined that we were gonna proceed as intended, but we were going to improve that path so that it was wider, longer, it had less curb, less compression cuts, so that it was a smoother ride. So, we made an effort to accommodate input we received from the public. We're here again. My feeling is a large part of why we're here again is because we have to get much more active and put a much greater priority on finishing the hub trail and actually making a connection. Because I agree with all of the enthusiasts and cyclists and people who are saying, the bikers are gonna go, and more people are biking, and that's a good thing, and this isn't a safe place to bike, and we have to make it a safer place to bike, and you don't make it a safer place to bike by not putting infrastructure in. We need to make sure we put a priority on developing the hub trail through this area. And we have, we're looking at that, but we have to act on it, and I'd say we have to act on it in the near term. But this isn't the connection that those recommendations and the advice we received suggests. So, to me, we're not gonna get another one that comes back and says, yes, you should put it there. There's a different route for this, and we should build it, and we should make sure we build it in the near term, and we should make sure we build more active transportation in our community because that's what a lot of younger people are looking for. And I think, looking down the road and building the community in the future, we should do that. But I think here, we should build the sidewalk that we approved and we plan to build, and we should just get it done. And frankly, I don't see the massive difference between this six-foot sidewalk and an eight-foot trail. We should build the sidewalk in accord with the engineering recommendations, legal recommendations, and the consulting recommendations we received. And then we should put a priority on finishing the hub trail through this area in the next couple of years so that we can move people around our community effectively and safely, and we don't say to bikers, don't go there. So, to me, tonight, it's either we build the sidewalk or we don't. If we don't build the sidewalk, nothing gets built there. And this conversation's done for now, and then another council, another time, will have to decide whether they go there and do anything, and they might decide not to do anything because we will lose the, the current price we have to build that sidewalk. We've already paid for it, we've already paid for it, it's designed, we can do it this year, I think we should put it down, and I think we should look towards the future and make sure that we finish the active transportation in this area and we improve the intersection in this area and make it safer for both our pedestrians and our bicyclists to get through this area. So, with that, the vote in front of us is very clear. Mr. Clerk, have you read the motion?
Uh, I have.
Okay. Does anybody need him to reread this motion? Okay. Did anybody call for recorded vote? Because he has his recorded vote pad in front of him, and I didn't see, the Council Myers wants a recorded vote. I was just asking because he's sitting on top of it, so I thought maybe he was. Okay, so we're calling the vote.
Uh, council recorded vote has been requested. Councilor Butland?
Four.
Councilor Myers?
Four.
Council Bruni?
Four.
Council Nero?
Four.
Council Grandinetti?
Four.
Council Hollingsworth?
Um, against.
Council Hoopinen?
Four.
Council Crumppodge?
Four.
Council Christian?
Four.
Council Fata?
Four.
Council Turco?
Four.
Mayor Provenzano?
Four.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Uh. Council, this brings us to, uh, agenda item six-ten.
Council Myers, can you replace me so I can use the washer?
Yes. We will deal with the, the overall, you're gonna be.
Just to the washer.
Brief, so.
Yeah, I will not be.
Council Myers, uh, we will deal with discussion on the report itself and questions on the report, and once the mayor returns, then we'll deal with, uh, the additional information.
The mayor will not be wrong.
Nothing's private.
Yeah, yeah. Just go to the washer.
Council, this item is, uh, the Red Cross Home Care Assistance Program Agreement. It is being enacted by a bylaw that's, uh, part of the agenda. Um, at this point, uh, Acting Mayor Myers will oversee any questions on the report itself. Uh, following the mayor's return, we will then deal with the additional information, which includes the, uh, motion put forth by, uh, Councilors Myers and, and Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, any questions on this? It's item six-point-one-zero. No questions? He better be quick. Okay, six-point-one-zero, this is the, uh, Red Cross Home Care Assistance Program Agreement. It's a report of Mr. Vares. Okay, Council Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Through you, Acting Mayor, I guess would I send it to our C A O?
Mr. Vares' report.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Vares, thank you. My question is just a quick one, where did I put it? Okay, um, the Red Cross Home Care, um, if you are eligible for this, Mr. Vares, who do you contact, um, to put, put on the list for the snow removal and grass cutting and so forth? I see that in the report, there is mention of the home help, housekeeping is shared between March of Dimes and Red Cross, then there is mention of the snow removal and grass cutting, um, being transferred to the V O N, Victoria Order of Nurses. So, who do you actually contact?
Through you, Acting Mayor, to Councilor Hollingsworth, um, the Canadian Red Cross is still administering the program and coordinating, so, uh, you would go through, uh, the Canadian Red Cross.
Okay, so, Canadian Red Cross locally in here, just the local phone number?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it. Council Hollingsworth on that? Yeah, Council Bruni?
I was going to comment on the additional information, but I'll wait until.
Okay.
Council Hollingsworth.
Okay, Council Hoopinen?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Myers. Mr. Vares, on the report, it says that there's currently a waiting list of eight to 10 people. I couldn't read it, I couldn't find it anywhere how many people are actually taking advantage of the service. Did I miss it, or would you happen to know that? Um, I'm on page fifty-seven. Under the analysis?
Yeah, through you, Ms., Madam Acting Mayor, to, uh, Council Hoopinen, I will have to confirm that it isn't in the report right now. I'll have to get that information from the Red Cross.
Okay, I'm just curious. I'd like to know that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on that part of the report? Okay, we can move along, can't we? I mean, is it a procedural issue, or is it just, is it a procedural issue?
It is a procedural issue.
Okay, so we need to go to the next.
Because it's your motion, uh, what we, uh.
Who's the next acting after me?
Uh, well, we don't, uh, have it that way, but, uh, maybe just to, uh, move things along, council, if I could ask for a volunteer from council to assume the acting, uh, role?
Steve.
Lou.
Okay, Council Turco will assume, uh, as Acting Mayor.
Oh, there goes Lou. So, it's my motion. First, and then, uh, Bruni has a question. It's my motion.
First, you drew first. All right, all right. Mr. Acting Mayor, members of, uh, council, uh, will now deal with the additional information. Uh, that is before you, as well as a motion by Councilors Myers and Hollingsworth, which reads as follows. Whereas city councils provided $50,000 in funding to a service provider, Red Cross, to impart support residential snow removal for seniors for many years, and whereas the need for this service is growing with our demographic, and a small waitlist does exist at this time, with an expectation it will increase, and whereas there remains an issue of providing snow removal services during exceptional snow events to address matters such as extra-heavy snowfall, or when the city undertakes road cutting that goes beyond what the usual standard of service currently being provided, and whereas the city of Branford has been running their windrow program for 10 years outsourced through a third party, now therefore be it. road cutting that goes beyond what the usual standard of service currently being provided. And whereas the city of Branford has been running their windrow program for 10 years outsourced through a third party, now therefore be it resolved. As item, I'm sorry, I'll just add some wording that should be in here, that the, an additional amount of, I believe it was $15,000, Counselor, be referred to the 2019 budget deliberations for consideration at that time?
I think we actually edited it now to have appropriate resolve, that it just be referred to the 2019 budget deliberations for, I think someone edited it and removed the amount and just left it as the item being referred? Or did you want, did you have the?
No, the amount should be in there.
The amount was, oh, 15. Yes, it was 15. Thank you. Okay. Sorry, I thought it got edited.
And the --
Okay, gotcha.
An additional $15,000 in funding for this program be referred to.
Be referred to, okay.
Okay.
All right. Should you like me to speak to this motion, Mr. Mayor?
No, it's great. All in favor?
Well, no.
Oh, you want to speak to it?
Yeah.
Everybody's going to support it, Susan, so go ahead, Counselor Myers.
Oh, I'm telling you. I'm going to miss you. Okay, so bottom line is, I appreciate Mr. Vares' report, and that's all great. But I'm not convinced that council can't do something a little bit further to enhance our current program. I had a good conversation today with Diane Lejeune, Diane Hugel, Diane Lejeune at Red Cross. And there are, just as we as counselors get the calls when there's those extraordinary events, they also get the calls at the Red Cross because they're the ones who are providing some service for some home care, of which snow is only one part. Our $50,000 that we've budgeted, it's about 10 years ago now, Counselor Butland, is it about 10? Diane and I thought it was 10. We didn't look it up. But it's about 10 years. We've never changed the amount. The $50,000 has been sufficient and isn't really even always, as our CFO would know, isn't really always even required because it's part of a bigger package. It's about a quarter of a million-dollar program altogether, about $250,000 program in total, of which the snow is only one part. So the conversation I had with Diane Lejeune was around the fact that we may need to, at some stage, just take a look at how do we have a creative approach to these extraordinary events that happen as really one-offs. They may only happen a couple of times throughout an entire winter season. But when they happen, differing than the grass management for a home care service, the individual can't get out of their driveway. If my grass gets long and it doesn't get cut, I might be contravening a city bylaw, but I can get out of my driveway. Doesn't matter how long the grass is. But on the snow management, for whom we're trying to provide this service, it in fact prevents them from getting out of their driveway. So it becomes a bit of a concern. I might have a medical appointment. There may be all kinds of reasons why I have to get out on these very few special extraordinary events that occur. So we had the discussion around the fact that how could this be approached? And she felt, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but we discussed the on-call. This would be something that would be like an on-call and over and above what we're already doing. And I don't think it's a huge amount of money. By no means is it 30,000 driveways in the city that we need new windrows for. Not at all. And if you look at what Branford's done, if you look at their model, the model is good. It's on a needs basis, and it's as needed. They do it as a standard of service all the time for their snow removal. That's not what I'm suggesting, and it's not what council gets the calls about. We get the calls on the extraordinary events, road snowcutting or an extremely heavy event where we've got these big boulder-like things in the middle of the driveway. I know we have a standard, but last winter, talking among counselors, we heard some parts of the city, public works probably went over and above what they're supposed to do, and they removed some out of people's driveway entrances. Then we talked to other counselors, they say, I called and they told me they can't, it's the rule. So this would make that service for those who really have to have it available. So council, I'm just asking you to refer this to your budget deliberations. I'll be a citizen. I'll be calling my ward counselors and lobbying them hard on it. That's it.
Okay. Oh, do you have to, Counselor? I guess, yeah, this is your second last meeting.
And I want a recorded vote.
The $15,000, I agree, Old Garden, it's a great resolution. The $15,000, I think is a bit arbitrary, and it's a bit of a pittance.
Yeah, we think it should be more, shouldn't we?
It should be a heck of a lot more. I'm not going to be here for that discussion. But the reason I truly support it, if you want to keep people in their homes, this is a very cost-effective way of having more people stay in their homes. If they don't stay in their homes and they have to go elsewhere, the cost escalates tremendously. So the people that access this are exceedingly happy with it. Eight to 10 only waiting lists, that surprises me. But if we expanded it, I think there would be a lot more people accessing it, and that would be a good thing for everybody, not just the people who are accessing it. Let's do it for seniors and not only seniors, folks who have physical ailments or whatever else. Great program. Thank you.
Okay. Really? Sandra, Counselor Hollingsworth?
She's the second.
Okay, this is it.
Okay. I just wanted to reiterate what Counselor Butland said. I had two constituents that contacted me, and they basically said, finally, my taxpayers, my tax dollar is going towards something of a real service that I need.
All in favor? Carried. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this brings us all the way through to Item 11. Consideration passing of bylaws. A motion by Counselors Hoopinen and Turco, resolved that all bylaws listed under Item 11 of the agenda under date 2018-09-10 be approved?
All in favor? Carried.
A motion by Counselors Hoopinen and Turco, resolved that this council proceed into closed session for three items regarding litigation or potential litigation, including matters before an administrative tribunal affecting the municipality or local board. And further be it resolved that should said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Turco, resolved that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? Carried.[1343.86]